Well, good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the Oklahoma City Planning Commission. Before we get started, just want to do a couple of housekeeping things. Number one, please take a moment to silence your cellphones at this time. I want to let everyone know that if you are wanting to address the commission about any agenda item, and you are not an applicant, please make sure you complete one of these forms that are outside. We do ask that if you're here with your neighbors, and it's a group of people, we ask that you try to appoint someone to represent all of your issues, if that's at all possible. But if not, we do ask that you refrain from offering repeated comments. So if your neighbor that spoke before you mentions the concern about drainage, you don't need to mention drainage, you can go on to the next item. We do have a long agenda today, so we do ask that everyone please be respectful of the time. We ask that you limit your comments to five minutes each. And most importantly, we follow the golden rule at the planning commission. So please treat us respectfully, each other respectfully, and the process respectfully. With that, we'll move forward with the agenda and to the receipt of the minutes from the previous meeting. Just looking for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to receive the minutes from the October 26 Planning Commission meeting.
Commissioner Claire moves to receive the minutes from the October 26 Planning Commission meeting. The motion's been seconded by Commissioner Meek. Please cast your votes when available.
I vote aye.
Commissioner Powers votes aye. And the motion passes. We're now in line for continuance requests, and we'll begin with uncontested requests.
Yes. Item 37, PC 10891, deferred to December 14th. Item 38, Plan OKC Conference of Plan Amendment, deferred to December 14th. Item 39, Conference of Plan Amendment 23-5, deferred to December 14th. Item 40, PUD 1967, deferred to December 14th. Item 41, Case PC 10895, deferred to December 14th. Item 42, Case PC 10897, deferred to December 14th. Item 43, Case PC 10898, deferred to December 14th. Item 44, Case PC 10904, deferred to December 14th. Item 45, KC 7600, deferred to January 11th. And item 46, Case PC 10907, has been withdrawn.
Thank you. Is there anyone here wishing to be heard on any of those items? Items 37 through 46. Seeing none, we're ready for a motion to approve.
I move to approve the uncontested continuance request as read.
Commissioner Claire moves to approve the uncontested continuance requests as read. That motion's been seconded by Commissioner Goveen. Please cast your votes.
I vote aye.
Commissioner Powers votes aye. And the motion passes. We're now in line for new requests.
Item 30, Case PUD 1976, has been deferred, requested deferred to December 14th.
Is there anyone here wishing to be heard on item 30? I think we're ready.
Move to approve the new continuance request as read.
Commissioner Claire moves to approve the new continuance request as read. Let's see if we'll get... There we go. And the motion's been seconded by Commissioner Powers. Please cast your votes. And the motion passes. We're now in line for the consent docket.
Item 1 is KC 7594, final plat of NHB Industrial Park, located west of South Rockwell and north of Southwest 74th Street. Item 2, KC 7596, final plat of Tuscany Lakes, Phase 4, located west of North County Line Road and north of Northwest 122nd Street. Item 3, KC 7599, final plat of Quail North Revised, located east of North May Avenue and south of Northwest 150th Street. Item 4, KC 7601, final plat of Buffalo Farms, Phase 1, located south of Southwest 29th Street and east of South County Line Road. Item 5, KC 7602, final plat of Buffalo Farms, Phase 2, located south of Southwest 29th Street and east of South County Line Road. Item 6, KC 7603, final plat of Liberty Villas, located west of South Airport, Air Depot Boulevard and north of Southeast 89th Street. Item 7, KC 7604, final plat of Magnolia Ridge, located north of Northwest 164th Street and west of North Pennsylvania Avenue. And item 8, KC 7605, final plat of 192nd and Penn Scooters, located south of Northwest 192nd Street and west of North Pennsylvania Avenue.
Thank you. Is there anyone here that was wishing to be heard on any of those items? All right, then we're ready for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move to approve the consent docket as read.
Commissioner Claire moves to approve the consent docket as read. The motion's been seconded by Commissioner Meek. Please cast your votes. And the motion passes. We're now in line for items requiring separate vote, and we'll begin with item 9.
This is KC 7597, preliminary plat of Kimmel Edition, located south of West Tefner Road and east of Northwestern Avenue, and a variance to Section 5.3.2.1.2 of the subdivision regulations.
Excellent. Is there an applicant present? Please give us your name and address for the record.
Sorry?
Please give us your name and address for the record.
My name's Corey West. I'm the owner of Kimmel Group, and we're presenting the preliminary plat to you for the 4.6 acres shown here.
Excellent. Let us know. Tell us all about it.
Oh, awesome. So we acquired the land because of the existing zoning of R1, and have presented a preliminary plat to you in accordance with R1 zoning. We acquired the land to bring a small gated community to the area where local residents can be proud of, as well as additional affordable housing for families at a lower price point for new construction.
Thank you. Anything else? This is in Ward 7, and I don't have any outstanding questions, except maybe to explain from staff on the variance and the need for the variance. Just wanted to make sure I understood that in plain language, if you don't mind, Jared.
Jared Martin, Planning Department. Yeah, the subregs require that intersections or streets intersecting the same street across from each other either be directly across from each other, be offset by 110 feet. And this one's off by about 30 feet. With, and truly, there's, it's really the only thing back, back there at the end of that street. There's not a lot of connecting streets, even though it may look like there could be in the future, there currently aren't. And so if they tried to line it up, they'd have to move their street north an additional 30 feet, which would make the north side of the street difficult to develop. So that's why they're requesting that.
Thank you. We do have one person signed up to speak on this issue. Do any questions from commissioners before we hear from our neighbor? Excellent. Then Tatiana Ball Suarez. Please give us your name and address for the record, and you have five minutes to address the commission.
Okay. My name is Tatiana Ball Suarez. My address is 817 Northwest 104th Street. So this proposed land is behind my house. So I was just kind of curious to know things like the construction, how long is that going to take? Is it going to be a lot of noise? I'm just, just general questions. I'm just kind of curious to know what I can expect as the homeowner, and what that means for me as far as my privacy and my home value goes.
I can't answer the questions about the construction, but I know that the applicant certainly can. As far as your privacy, I believe that there's screening that's required between your home and theirs. I believe it's a six-foot fence, the standard screening. So there's that. But any of your, the other questions about logistics, as far as when they'll be doing the construction and what that looks like, you have to ask the applicant.
Okay.
Anything else that we might be able to address?
Um, no. I think that was, just kind of trying to get some information.
Excellent. Well, he's happy to help, I'm sure. So, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Any other questions from commissioners?
I have a question. Since this is going to be gated, does that mean that the streets then are, you know, not going to be built to city standards? It's always a concern.
So we are proposing to construct a 26-foot wide street according to city standards, even though it is a private drive with a gated entrance.
Okay. Thank you.
Is that clear in the MDS, or do we need a TE to agree that? I guess...
Well, I just noticed that there's no, there's no comment from...
Public Works.
Public Works about this, streets, traffic, drainage, maintenance, et cetera. So I'm just...
So they would have to, I think, put in the application that they're doing anything other than, so it has to meet city standard, even if it's a private street.
Okay. Doesn't need to be...
Mary can.
Yeah, Mary can clarify.
Berry Lodge, Public Works. Yes, since they, they're showing this not as a private driveway, but as a private street, then it will have to be constructed to the Oklahoma City standards. One thing I would point out, too, if there, it looks like they're putting gates on this, and there's going to have to be the escape island, and there's got to be a keypad location. So there's going to have to be some modifications to the entrance just to make it fit. And so there's, there's got to be a queuing space before, so the cars don't back out, or not stacked back out onto the public street. So there's, there's going to be some modifications that have to be done to that layout, but the streets themselves will have to be built to the city standards.
But none of those issues, as far as the gate, need to be included in the, in the plat, right?
This is in the preliminary plat layout, and so it's going to come back again with the final plat, and it can all be addressed at that stage.
Gotcha.
And all of those things that you just said about the queuing and spacing and all that kind of stuff, that's all something that they'll just find out as they go along they're going to have to do, and not something necessarily that we need to require of them here.
Right. That's going to be something that is, is just going to be a standard requirement. When you put that gate in there, it's going to dictate the lane widths for fire department emergency vehicle access. They've got to have a spot for the keypad to be able to open the gate.
The Knox box.
Yeah, the Knox box for a fire department to get in. They've got to have a turnaround spot for people that turn in there and go, oh, wait, this is where I needed to be. So they've got to be able to get out as well. So there'll be some modifications on that entrance that are required.
And so when, when you say the streets will have to be built to city standards and so on, does that include that the turn radius of the cul-de-sac has to meet emergency vehicle standards, all that?
Yes, it does.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, then we're looking for a motion.
We'll take the variance first. So I'll motion to approve the variance of Section 5.3.2.1.2 of the subdivision regulations.
Commissioner Claire moves to approve of Section 5.3.2.1.2 of the subdivision regulations. That motion's been seconded by Commissioner Privet. Please cast your votes. And the motion passes. We're now in line for the vote on the item.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move to recommend approval of item C 7597.
Commissioner Claire moves to approve C 7597. The motion's been seconded by Commissioner Meek. Please cast your votes. And the motion passes. And if you don't mind, please make sure you visit with Ms. Ball Suarez to get her contact information as well. We're in line for item 10.
Item 10 is Case DA-8-PH, application for consideration of a lot split, deed approval on property located behind 16015 Teasdale Road, and a variance to Section 3.4.4.1.2F of the subdivision regulations.
Thank you. Is there an applicant present?
Good afternoon, commissioners. My name is Chris Larson. I reside at 233 Northwest 159th Circle in Edmond. I'm the applicant and the spokesperson for this area. Basically, the landowner, Jesse Gibbons, lives north of this section, right there in Section 1. He lives on the north side. We're interested in the area, Section 3, surrounded by the green highlight. That area to the north and to the west has a creek that Jesse cannot access to take care of the property. The rest of the land backs up to myself and four other neighbors. So over the last few years, we've worked with Jesse, taken care of that area. You can see a round spot on the Section 3 where there used to be a huge brush pile, and collectively, we've all cleaned that up, got rid of it. This was formerly a golf course. We, we really enjoy the area, like to take care of it. It isn't a massive flood zone. We see it flooded each year, sometimes worse than others, but it's a flood zone. We can't do anything with it. There's no access to it. Jesse can't maintain it. Yeah, if you go down to the next... So this is Section 3, basically, and how it backs up to our homes are what we're looking for. So we have to ask for the variance because of the three-lot split, and this is a five-lot split. But there's no plans to develop it, just basically want to take care of it and work together to build it, an area that all of our neighbors can, that's the flood zone. So we can all use this area just for its scenic beauty and common, common space. So asking for your approval.
Thank you. And I have a couple of questions, but they're probably better suited for staff on this. For a lot split, is there a notice requirement for this?
Yeah, for a lot split, sorry, Jared Martin, Planning Department. For a lot split, there is a similar notice requirement as it would be if it was a final plat.
Gotcha. So can we go back to the previous exhibit that had the, that showed us how the lots were actually being split? I just had, my concern was for, it's the next one. Can you scroll up? There we go, that, that one. My concern is for the neighbors who, whose homes are adjacent to Mr. and Mrs. Gonzalez, and the fact that, is there a fence or some, I just am like, I think the, the way that that's split up, I just hope those people are aware of the, of the change. Because otherwise, you'll think it's your backyard, and then it's...
Right. Well, we spoke to the neighbors, and then, yeah, they're aware of that. They've got the notice on the hearing, and, and, yeah, we have talked to the neighbors. And really, there is, there is fencing there.
Okay.
But again, you know, we all look at it, maintain it, and we share that area. So it's common for one of us to mow most of it. Mark will usually mow his, and then the other three of us to the north will all mow, we just share, we just share the efforts. And we do that for everybody. So, yeah, there, there hasn't been any, any concern or pushback. But the, the applicants in here, the five of us, have been, you know, the ones doing the work and then the maintenance, and we have an agreement from Jesse to sell it to us, and we've agreed to buy it if you guys approve.
Cool. I'm in support. Any questions from commissioners?
Yeah, did you have to buy this? Or did it just fall in your hand? I mean, did it fall in your lap, and you just got to take over it? Did you have to buy it, or...
We're going to buy it if you, we have to have the approval first, but, yeah, we have plans to buy it. So during the cleanup process, we talked to Jesse, and he wanted to sell, and we wanted to buy. And so during that process, here we are.
Yeah. Makes sense to me.
I'm, I'm curious just about some details, I guess. Doesn't a lot split require access to a public street? Staff?
Well, wouldn't they have it? Because of...
So that's correct. So that's why they're adding the land in the golf course that they're splitting up to each one of their existing lots that already has that frontage. So on paper, their, their existing lots are just getting bigger, is what's happening.
So when you said that you were wanting to make this available, might not have been the word you used, for, for the neighbors and their use and so on, you're talking about these specific neighbors, not the neighborhood as a whole?
Right. Right. So, so basically, if you notice the top two lots there, there is an open area where our neighbors will walk through and walk their dogs, and we're okay with that, you know? So there is beauty or value that's added to the neighbors in Sheffield Glen. The bridges that used to go across are, one of them's completely gone, the other's about to go across the creek. So really, we don't see many neighbors coming from the other side, but it is, has been publicly used, and, and the old former golf course paths provide a really nice place to, to walk a dog, or throw a frisbee, or fly a kite, and we're fine with that, so...
But these individual neighbors will be adding this property to their land.
Yeah.
It won't be required maintenance by the common area agreement in any way, shape, or form. You're going to continue to do it, it's going to be your property.
Yes.
Okay.
You could take down your back fence and fence that area that points to your house that you're agreeing to.
I don't have a fence in my backyard. I don't plan on putting one up. I'm just planning on keeping it.
But they all could.
They all could.
They could, yeah. They could.
Any other questions, commissioners? If not, we need a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move to recommend approval of item DA-8-PH.
Commissioner Claire...
Excuse me, I'm sorry. I got to do the variance first.
Oh, yeah.
To approve the variance, Section 3.4.4.1.2F of the subdivision regulations.
Commissioner Claire moves to approve the variance to Section 3.4.4.1.2F of the subdivision That motion's been seconded by Commissioner Powers. Please cast your votes. And the motion passes, and we're in line for the vote on the item.
And I'll move to approve, recommend approval of item DA-8-PH.
Commissioner Claire moves to approve of DA-8-PH.
To be very clear, are we recommending, or is this our decision?
I believe it's our decision, but I'll...
Yeah, it's our, yeah.
The motion's been seconded by Commissioner Meek. Please cast your votes. And the motion passes. We're in line for item 11.
Item 11 is Case PC 10906, application by on cue to rezone 3850 South Prospect Avenue from C3 to I1.
Good afternoon, David Box, 522 Call Core Drive, here on behalf of the applicant. This is for an on cue at I-35 and Grand Boulevard. Happy to answer any questions.
This is in Ward 4. Commissioner Privet?
I hadn't really had concerns with it, going by the location. Grand and I-35 is kind of my, my source of new development would be great.
Seems like a good spot to me, too. Other questions? Commissioners? I think we're ready.
All right. Somebody signed up to speak, I don't guess?
Nope.
Okay. I'll move to recommend approval of PC 10906.
Commissioner Privet moves to recommend approval of PC 10906 to City Council. The motion's been seconded by Commissioner Claire. Please cast your votes.
Thank you.
Motion passes. Thank you. We're in line for item 12.
This is KC E1109, application to close a portion of South Drexel Avenue right-of-way north of Southwest, Southwest 157th Street.
Good afternoon, Mike Bores, 2200 Shadow Lake Drive, Oklahoma City. We're, we've got a strip of land that is basically a mud hole. It's not maintained, it's not paved, and homeowners that abut the property will take over maintenance, deal with the drainage. It's seen, it's called South Drexel, but it's not a street. Because it looks like a street to Google Maps and GPS, occasionally a delivery truck or a vehicle drives up it, gets stuck.
Oh, wow.
So it, basically, it's a mess when there's moisture. And we're asking that easement be canceled, vacated, they'll take over. Read the staff report, talk to my client, and no problems. We ask your approval.
Thank you. Any comments from staff on this one, too? I know we're generally opposed to, or we are highly critical of these closures often. This is in Ward 5. Commissioner Newman?
I'm actually quite familiar with the location he's talking about most of my life, because I used to ride the school bus by there, and it's always been sort of a swampy mud hole trail. Certainly is not qualified for a street, and has never been maintained, and hasn't, usually has a lot of willow trees going up in it. So I'm not opposed to it. Do we have any opposition against it?
Not that I'm aware of.
I, I think getting it cleaned up would probably benefit the neighborhood more than maintaining it. I don't have any issues with closing it.
Makes sense. Commissioner Meek?
I see the TE regarding the, before it goes to council, providing...
Topo survey?
Yeah, requiring the topo to check and make sure there's not any utilities within that. Would the staff believe there's any in there?
It does the Segregated Utilities Department. Yes, there is a 30-inch sanitary sewer line that runs there. However, with the exhibits and everything, they didn't have exact dimensions of where it is. And so with that 30-inch line, we believe it's further north of the right-of-way, and so it would be in a separate easement, so we just have to maintain that easement access that goes perpendicular across what they want to close.
Okay. Makes sense now.
Does it, does it have to be a full-on topo survey, or it going to be a one call? Or, you know, to let them know where that is?
Well, Sarah Welch Planning, it's, it's, this is the standard statement we've been putting into our, our closure applications. So we would take an ALTA or a topo, something that shows where the utilities are.
Okay. Yeah, all right. Well, surveyor and a topo survey is a specific type of survey. And that's a lot of survey for just one pipeline, so just one. I'm just curious. Thanks. For one easement.
I'm curious about the, this exhibit seems to indicate that there are people who take access to this, to Drexel. Are they all able to proceed north? And, I mean, the fact that there's nobody here objecting, I guess, says something, but I, I'm curious about...
Come in from the north, yeah? No, they actually come in from the east, the people to the south of that...
Oh. Down the southeast corner?
Yeah.
These folks here?
Yes. No, I mean, the, the access is traditionally been down May Avenue to 157th, which is all paved.
Well, they're talking about the people who are on, who live on Drexel, where's their access? Are they coming from the north?
They come from 149.
They're coming from 149?
Correct, from the north.
To get there? Because it sounds like the condition of Drexel that's being closed is not in good enough shape for them to drive through it, correct?
No, it's improved to a certain extent from 149 to the last residence.
To, to the last residence, but not all the way to 157?
And from that point to the south, it is basically mud.
Okay.
Yeah, all four homes still have access to the driveways in the house.
From Drexel? Yeah.
From Drexel.
Yeah. Yes.
Well, I suppose if they're not using it now for access, they won't miss it.
Yeah. That's a good point. Any, anything else before we... Sarah?
No, I just wanted to confirm that staff received petitions from the property owners adjoining the, I mean, we ensured that anyone who has access to that frontage will have alternate street access.
Great. All right, I think we're looking for a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval of item number 12, CE 1109.
Commissioner Newman moves approval of CE 1109, excuse me, recommends approval of CE 1109 to City Council. And the motion's been seconded by Commissioner Meek, please cast your votes. And the motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're in line for item 13.
This is case CE 1107, application to close a portion of a north, south, and east-west alley in Block 2 of Orchard Park Edition, south of West Main Street and east of North Klein Avenue.
Good afternoon, Mark Zitsal with Johnson and Associates, addresses Wendy Sheridan Avenue. We are requesting closure of an alley, a public alley, that is aiding in the redevelopment of this property. It was formerly a countertop and granite supplier. KOSU is going to be moving in and relocating their operations there, which is very exciting. There's some fun things planned for the building. You can see the area in red on the south side of the northwest alley was already closed. That left the blue portion open, but not accessible or usable. One of the other uses that's going to occur in this building is a living unit for the radio operator. And so, trying to get them some green space and outdoor space for their dog, we're going to utilize what will be the former alley. So, we're reserving the easements for the utilities that were in there, we have no issue with that. One amendment I'd like to make to the application is to remove our request to close the east-west portion of the alley. I think there are other conversations that we can continue on that for what we're trying to accomplish, but right now, we really need to move forward with the north-south. And so, we would ask that we amend the application just to be the area in blue, which is a north-south 20-foot alley.
Excellent. This is in Ward 6, Commissioner Govine.
Yes, we've reviewed the case. I don't have any concerns. In fact, any clarifications I wanted to get were related to the east-west portion. I, the area in blue seemed straightforward enough. It's being developed and being used, so it'll be maintained. I'm in support.
Agreed. Other questions, Commissioners? I believe we do have one person signed up to speak and that is Todd McClure. So, why don't we get here from him, if he's here? For item, well, nope, I think the wrong, it says item 13, but I think it's the wrong PUD, the wrong case. So, I need to confirm that, so.
So, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I did have a question about this. When I spoke with Mr. Zitsal, he indicated that their initial stab at this was to get a revocable permit because they don't intend to vacate this portion of the street, am I, and, or the alley. And they do believe that it will be used and needed in the future for the development of the block. But, there was some issue about that approach with staff and I'm kind of curious about that because it actually seems to me like a better way to deal with it.
The revocable permit, you're talking about for the, for the portion in green?
Yeah, to put, to put gates up, you know, temporarily for the duration of however long it's going to be, what it's going to be. And, you know, dealing with the issues that they're dealing with now, but those may not continue into the future, especially if the whole block is redeveloped. So, you know, we've been told in the past, I'll give our current advisor from the municipal council's office a right, an opportunity to disagree. I'm not sure I've ever really agreed, but nonetheless, we've been told in the past that if the city closes something, they don't have the legal basis, or the right to object to its complete vacation. And so, it seems to me that closing it is in some way a step that at least the city sees is kind of irrevocable. And I'm, I'm not crazy about that if there seems to be consensus that at some point, this is going to be needed and used.
So, I guess we should let, let's, Barry, you want, for your first stop?
Barry Lodge, Public Works. So, we did have a conversation with Mark concerning this, this closure and the revocable permit part of it. And what they wanted to do was build a fence across the public alleyway.
Right.
So, which, it's, it's kind of been our stance that we're, we don't want to get that started where we start allowing property owners just to close off, which essentially it does. It stops access in that alley, which is, it's a public alleyway, but when that fence is built across there, it's gonna, it prevents access by the public for any, any use. So, that was the reason for us saying, no, we don't want to go the revocable permit route with that. Now, in the conversation with, with Mark, too, when we kind of pushed on that issue, he did say that their intent, and Mark can correct me if I, if I misstate this, which I have before, that they would, they were going to go forward with the closure, but not proceed with the vacation at that point, which would still leave the city the opportunity to reopen that at some point if necessary. And then, if they, if they decided to, they could proceed to the vacation. But, that's, that was kind of our reasoning on that. If we, if we start it here and allow this one to have a fence built across it, it, it's going to domino across...
But, of course, once it's closed, then they can put a fence across it.
Right, yeah. Once they close it, they could because then it, it...
And again, what we have been told by the municipal council's office is, once the city closes it, they don't have a basis to argue in court that it can't be vacated. So, that's a very permanent step, in a way. Now, having done a few closures and vacations, I'm not sure I've ever fully agreed with that position, but it is the position of the municipal council's office that, and we've been told repeatedly, that once it's closed, they don't have a basis to keep it from being vacated.
I'm not sure how that works because if there's existing utilities there...
You always have to reserve your, you always have to reserve your utility access. That's, you can vacate things and still do that.
Yes, even if it's vacated, the utilities stay. The, the access or the easement for the utilities is not closed. Even if they go through the vacation process, that utility easement is still reserved in perpetuity.
So, at the end of the day, we would still end up with a revocable permit over a public easement. It's just whether or not the alley is technically closed or not. Our intent was seeking to secure the area immediately north of the building of where you see the number 13 because immediately north of that, there's about a six-foot steel fence. It creates a blind spot and a dead zone that's not utilized where the other owners on the block are going out to the east. And so, there's lower fences over there, that side of the alley hasn't experienced the, the issues. We've worked with all the property owners, everyone was agreeable to maintain that access out to the east and to not move forward with the vacation. But, where our client is in terms of timing, the more important portion is the north-south, which is why we're happy to have continued conversations. I think our property owner, I can speak for them, in that they're hopeful to see the main street frontage redevelop, lose their curb cuts, and fully utilize that alley, which will bring development to the block. That's why we were not necessarily in favor of the closure for everything Commissioner Powers just said, which if it's closed, it'll likely either eventually get vacated or publicly, you don't have access to it any longer. And I think that's an issue from a design standpoint, but maybe that's a debate for another day. But, we would love for staff to be open to a revocable permit for a fence.
I don't want to misstate that, but, again, my, my objection to it in this whole deal is the precedent that it sets because it's a, once you do it in one spot, now it's allowable everywhere. And I, I think we're just setting, we're setting a real bad precedent if we allow that. If we go through with that, with the closure process, the, it, and not proceed to the vacation, it still remains where, you know, they could fence it at that point, but the city could come back through another action and reopen that alleyway.
I agree with you about that. I'm not sure the municipal council's office does, though. And this, this point has come up repeatedly.
Sure, so, I don't know that I could tell you right off the cuff whether or not that previous guidance won, if that's, I appreciate you providing what, what you believe the guidance was, but having not, having it in front of me, I don't know what our previous guidance was. So, if I could have the opportunity to kind of confirm, this is what our previous, previous guidance was, and it's still our guidance today, that would, that would be helpful.
So, on that point, I would leave it to you, whether you want to take the time or move forward today.
Yeah, so, we want to move forward with the area in blue. We can continue to have this conversation and be engaged on the east-west portion. So, the municipal council's office can take all the time they need on that portion.
And if it matters to the rest of you, I realize this is a little bit esoteric, but to me, I'm about to say something I ought to know after having sat here this long, but revocable permits would be purely administrative, wouldn't they?
Mm-hmm.
And is that your concern, that you, you think it's something that we need to, to decide rather than to have it just done administratively?
Yeah, the revocable permits are, as a general rule, are an administrative process. We do that through our, our office on a more than daily basis, multiple times. So, that, that really was not the question. I think it was just something Mark wanted to bring up. I don't think, I don't think he's trying to get you to overrule us.
For me, for me, it would be. I mean, I, I'm all, I'm glad to have the opportunity to make a decision about this. If it's something that would have been just done administratively, I, I would advocate a little less aggressively on your part because I'm, I'm happy to be able to look at it and make a decision from the commission.
And we appreciate that. My point and the reason that I made the request, Mr. Lodge, was you go throughout the core and there are fences and alleys everywhere that were done without a revocable permit. So, in this case, it's, you know, you try and go through the right method. And I just, I don't think the long-term closure of the, of this particular alley on this block is necessarily the path forward for us, which is why we're seeking just to amend it today.
Okay.
Other questions, Commissioners? Otherwise, I think we're ready for a motion.
I thought this was a really simple one. We'll certainly talk more about the, the issues of revocable and enclosures and easements, vacations. But, I will proceed to move approval of CE 1107, the portion in green only. Do we need, no Barry? Sorry, sorry. The portion in blue only, not the east-west green portion.
Commissioner Govine moves to approve CE 1107, excuse me, to recommend approval of CE 1107. And with the additional technical evaluation, limiting the scope to just the north-south portion that is in blue in the exhibit. Is there a second? Let's see.
Yes, because on this property, there's already a survey that's been conducted.
Only for that reason. Okay, the motion's been seconded by Commissioner Claire, please cast your votes. And the motion passes, we're in line for item 14.
This is SPOD 1566, application to rezone 4511 Madera Boulevard from O2 and C3 to SPOD 1566.
Good afternoon, David Box, 522 Call Core Drive. This application is for an SPOD that would allow an existing structure that's been there for many years to come into compliance with current zoning. Oftentimes, when you see this, it happens when a sale is occurring, title company wants to ensure that whatever it is they're looking at is legal, not legally non-conforming. Because if it's legally non-conforming, a fire, tornado, or some other incident happens, they're not allowed to build it back. This would ensure that that use that's been there for many years is permitted as legal. There are no TEs.
Excellent. This is in Ward 4, Commissioner Privet?
Yep, and I had no issues with it. I deal with these things all the time, so.
Agreed. Any other questions from Commissioners? Think we're ready for a motion, Commissioner Privet?
Move to recommend approval of SPOD 1566.
Commissioner Privet moves to recommend approval of SPOD 1566 to City Council. The motion's been seconded by Commissioner Meek, please cast your votes. And the motion passes, we're in line for item 15.
This is SPOD 1571, application to rezone 1615 Northwest 31st Street from R1 to SPOD 1571.
Good afternoon, Mark Grubbs, 1800 South Sierra Road, on behalf of the applicant. This is a spud to permit an accessory dwelling unit on existing R1-zoned land. Spud is still R1 base. I would like to discuss the TEs. T number one, we, we agreed to strike the rooftop terraces. We would like to still permit a balcony. I would suggest that the balcony, balcony shall be permitted if facing interior to the lot. TE number two, we can agree to the maximum height of 24 feet. T number three, I would just like to discuss this for, for future. 55% including the paving is quite restrictive on the small lots that this is going to be used on. In this instance, I did the calculations, I think we can agree to the 55% here. But, if you just do the math, 5,000, 6,000 square foot lot, they're putting 2,000, 2,500 square foot houses on them with a garage, another 400 square feet, a porch, you're up to 3,000 square feet with the primary residence. On, on a standard R1 lot with a driveway, you're already over 55%. If you come and ask for, if the future code's going to say that 55% is that threshold, then you might as well not permit accessory dwelling units because you can't fit it on there. It's, our code has always been for the, the structures and not for the paving. I'll go on to say that even our drainage calculations, we, we're calculating 70% impervious area when we're doing our drainage calculations. So, for future discussion, I know this is for future code that's being updated. If that 55% threshold's going to be on there and include the paving, going to be very hard to meet that. You're going to have people come in here asking for variances left and right, in my opinion. In this instance, I can agree with it, but for future, because it, it makes specific reference, this is based on a workshop that recently happened and it makes specific reference to future codes. And this is what they're basing these TEs on. So, that's the reason for my comments. I don't want to set a precedence for all the other wonderful consultants out here, but I can agree to these TEs in this instance. And just ask for the T number one to strike, we'll go ahead and strike the rooftop terrace. We would prefer to keep the balcony, but it faces interior to the lot.
When you say face interior, what do you mean by that?
It won't, it won't face looking out over somebody else's...
Well, look over the back fence, or the side fence.
It'll face the primary residence.
I just wanted to make sure that the wording...
Yeah, we need to be clear.
In this instance, the balcony be, would be facing the garage, the drive, where it says drive on the back right there.
Okay.
Yeah, that balcony would be facing the main house.
That makes sense.
All right, Mark, did you say you could meet the height requirement after all?
Say it again?
Did you say you could meet the height requirement after all?
I can. I've asked that and they can meet it.
Okay.
This is Ward 2, Commissioner Powers.
Yeah, we, we had discussed this and I had, you know, indicated that I would not object to a balcony that was inward-facing, that was, that was faced toward the house, in this case, facing south. I, I understand that that is also going to be included in our, the draft of our new code and so it's something we should discuss more. The, the issue about the paving being included or not included, I was not aware, it hasn't been included in the past in calculations about lot coverage. I think it should be. But, of course, it needs to be a reasonable amount, whatever that is, and maybe that just requires more discussion. I, I thought that the, these calculations are not based on the workshop, that we were just being informed what the new code is going to, it was just a study session for us. But, you know, I, I feel pretty strongly that there's no reason not to be adhering to these standards right now, so I'm glad you can meet them.
Makes sense to me. I mean, in a, in a, maybe a longer, in a, with a shorter agenda, maybe we could have a better, better discussion about that 55% maximum. But, in light of the fact that you can meet it, I mean, I think we could probably save this one for another day. Other questions, comments from Commissioners?
I just have one question. How, how tall is the existing home? Do you know?
I don't know the answer to that, sorry.
It's a single-story home.
And I'm not going to get into long discussion, but I think we need to have discussion on the lot coverage specifically and the height in the future.
Agreed.
I have concerns about both of those.
Agreed. And I think we had a good discussion about some of that, you know, at the studies, the study session last week, but.
We're still drafting.
Yeah, we're still working.
So, there's room for more discussion, so.
Agreed. Good comments from Mr. Grubbs. Ready for a motion?
So, I will move approval of item number 15, S.P.U.D. 1571, with the TEs, with the single exception of permitting a, in this case, south-facing balcony, an interior-facing balcony.
Excellent.
No rooftop terraces.
Commissioner Powers moves to recommend approval for S.P.U.D. 1571 to City Council with the amended TEs as read into the record. The motion's been seconded by Commissioner Govine. Please cast your votes. And the motion passes. Thank you. We're in line for item 16.
This is S.P.U.D. 1971, application to rezone 14924 Southeast 104th Street from RA.
Mark Grubbs, 1800 South Sarah Road, on behalf of the applicant. This is a P.U.D. located at the southwest corner of Southeast 104th and Choctaw Road. This P.U.D. is to allow for, it's an RC rural commercial district-based zoning, to allow for, more specifically, a farmer's market and a very few other permanent uses. There's an existing Dollar General across the street. Staff recommends approval. We do agree to the TEs. We'd be, we would ask your approval.
No porta-potties?
Say what?
No porta-potties, Mark.
Well, basically, we're striking that because it's not a zoning issue, it's a building code issue.
Commissioner Privet?
So, possible porta-potties, but we can't regulate it.
I don't know. Hopefully not.
Holes in the ground, yeah. I didn't see any of the permanent uses that really struck me as not being compatible, so I'm okay with it. If there's someone else with questions, please pose them.
I do not have questions, but will admit that this is, I don't know that I've, could immediately recall a case quite with this rural commercial designation, so I thought that was interesting. But seems good to me. Other questions from commissioners?
None. I'll move to recommend approval of P.U.D. 1971.
Commissioner Privet moves to recommend approval of P.U.D. 1971 to City Council.
Subject to the technical evaluations?
Subject to the technical evaluations. Looking for a second. And that's been seconded by Commissioner Newman. Please cast your votes. The motion passes. We're in line for item 17.
This is S.P.U.D. 1509, application to rezone 1603 North Classen Boulevard from R3.
Fallon Brooks, Jolly Bird Home Design, 733 Northwest 22nd, representing the applicant. So, this is going from R3 to some pretty high-density urban zoning, so any questions?
Could you, sorry, I guess I, one thing on page 11 of our staff report. It mentions, "The intent is to allow a fence wall similar to what is shown in the conceptual renderings, but the MDS may need to specify the distance or condition when and where the fence would be installed." And I guess my question is either for you, Fallon, or for staff, is that a TE that we need to add? Or what do we need to do to address that issue?
I think that we agreed that we don't need anything on there. I think the idea was that if we had residential uses that fronted Classen, that we would have, you know, like a step up, basically, with like a little garden wall or something.
And there is an existing one?
No, there's a rolling terrace currently.
Gotcha.
Sarah Welch, Planning Department. Our discussion was just about the bottom picture, where you see the fence along Classen. And really, I was hoping Mr. Govine might assist with this part, because if you look under the, on page 3 of the staff report, under number 8, site-proof screening, it just says that a six-foot-high wall or fence, in addition to the retaining wall, may be built along the east boundary abutting Classen Boulevard. And that was the part that, at the very last minute, I thought, is that clear enough? So. We worked a lot with the applicant. I mean, they've been here.
Oh, neighbors, everything.
With the neighbors, they expanded the subject area, they changed the concept. So, this was like the very last thing, that at the very last second, we thought, is that going to be cleared for permitting purposes?
I understand the rationale for having the screening in that residential portion that's close to Classen Boulevard, whereas the commercial mixed-use portion is not screened and is more accessible on the corner. So, it makes sense to me. I wasn't aware there was a conflict or concern about the language. But if we needed to clarify, could we just say, let's see, east, sorry, it is worded as, "may be built along the east boundary abutting Classen Boulevard"?
But we don't want it to impede with the sidewalk or anything like that, right?
Yeah, sidewalks and right-of-way still have to be provided and made, so, because we're really talking about the, a portion of the east boundary, right? Is there a specific number of fence or feet from the intersection that we can say beyond, you know, 150 feet from the center line of street or something to that effect, to say that you can only do the screening halfway down the block?
So, the entire MDS is written so that we can, we could develop this either completely residential or a mix of them? And so, I think what you're asking me is how many of those are there along Classen?
Well, I'm just irrespective of the number of units, I'm talking about the extent of fence. Well, okay, okay, that doesn't help.
Oh, that doesn't help, okay. We're unsure if we even needed it. It was really in there as a, like, do we need this? Or is this a condition that we could build anyway regardless? That's why it was in there, and I had a lot of discussion about it.
We have had a lot of back and forth. They would be limited to a four-foot front yard fence, should they.
Decide to do it?
Yeah.
Okay. So, we're okay with the ambiguity here, unless we have objections to the fence, period? Any thoughts, commissioners?
Well, I guess the four-foot fence, I don't, I wouldn't have any objections personally for the extent of the property. Six-foot and higher fence, you know, in the images, looks appropriate in this case, because it relates to the uses, but I understand that these images aren't necessarily the exact plan that they'll come with.
So, do you just want to say for the northern, and I'm so bad at dimensions, but, you know, 50 feet of the structure? Or 100 feet of the structure, or is it, is it that you want to tie it to?
Well, it sounds to me like it could be, it could be 100 percent, residential could be eventually 100 percent of the facade. So, can we just say for the length of residential abutting or fronting Classen?
We could. That's where I was going with it, but then the issue with that is it could be all residential along Classen.
It could be, and if it were six-foot, I would have an issue with that, but it sounds to me like it's limited to four-foot.
Well, but the wording in here is six-foot-high fence, "In addition to retaining wall, may be built along the east boundary abutting Classen Boulevard." We could add for a maximum of 50 percent of the property boundary, and the rest could be four-foot, so you have some flexibility to step it in there, but provide some relief, you know, so it's not just a wall. So, I would propose that we add the wording, or we add a TE that says, "A maximum six-foot-high fence may be built along up to 50 percent of the boundary abutting Classen Boulevard."
Thoughts on that, Fallon?
I'm okay with that.
If that would be acceptable.
Just throwing this out here, does that leave too much, you could do 25 and 25, and so it wouldn't, okay.
I would actually, if I was designing it, I would hope that they would mix that up. Not 50 percent continuous, one height and the other height, but that.
This is all still conceptual, and so that's, yeah, we don't know what it's going to end up looking like, but we don't want to. We've had in the past where we've had S.P.U.D.s that inadvertently resulted in something we didn't intend. So, that's, we're trying to avoid that here. So, I'm down for whatever TE you guys want to put on it.
That feels like it gives enough flexibility to vary the height and keep it relatively porous and open.
Yeah.
So, but are there other concerns, or people signed up to speak, or any?
No one signed up to speak. I think we're ready for the motion. And if you don't mind restating the TE as well.
Sure. I will move to recommend approval of S.P.U.D. 1509. We will add a TE that states, "A six-foot-high fence may be built along up to 50 percent of the boundary abutting Classen Boulevard."
We all good with that language? All right. Commissioner Govine moves to recommend approval to City Council of S.P.U.D. 1509, subject to the additional technical evaluation as read into the record. That motion's been seconded by Commissioner Meek. Please cast your votes. The motion passes. Good luck. We're in line for item 18.
Item 18 is case P.U.D. 1975, application to rezone 8715 Broadway Extension from P.U.D. 1491 and P.U.D. 921.
Good afternoon, Mark Zitsel with Johnson &amp; Associates, address is 100 Sheridan Avenue. On behalf of the applicant, before you is a P.U.D. for a new medical office development, site plan. This is a very intentional development. We are abutting a neighborhood. And you can see, we had three streets that had stubbed and dead-ended into the neighborhood. On the previous P.U.D. that had been approved, it was done so in a way that really sought to kind of separate from the community. Our developer on this project is seeking to do something that seeks to integrate the community into the project, the development. Noted on there is called unison, and so we're proposing some pedestrian connections. We'll have a pond and then green space that we hope that the community can come over into the development and enjoy. We sent out, aside from the public notice that the city sent out, our office sent out over 500 public notices inviting the neighbors to a community meeting at Kip Academy, which is immediately south of this project. While we didn't necessarily have the turnout that we wanted, we were able to connect with a handful of neighbors, a couple that live immediately adjacent. We did not receive any negative feedback over what we were proposing to do, which we took as a positive sign. We hope to continue to build relationships with that neighborhood as the development occurs. So, one of the unique things about this project is we are proposing to not construct a site-proof fence. In lieu of that, we have landscaping requirements and landscape buffers, so that we can help bring these two tracts of land together. What you don't see noted on here is Robinson is immediately east of the neighborhood. Thank you. So, there's a 50-foot right-of-way that is not part of our property. And then, our property's on the other side where that landscaping will be. So, there's already a significant buffer just through existing street, street right-of-way. And so, we have a TE in the staff report seeking to prohibit billboards. We're in agreement with that. I spoke with Commissioner Powers right before this. I think we were going to add a TE that stated that any of the additional signs that we noted in here that were not the eight-foot monument signs or lower shall be within 50 feet of Broadway Extension, so that we're not putting any of that signage up against the neighborhood or the community there. We talked a little bit about the community recreation use. That use is pretty wide open. I think typically, you'd see that used for golf courses, for tennis courts, and kind of large tourism-driven sport complexes. Our purpose and intent of having that is so that we have this community recreation pond and green space. So, we're open to massaging that use unit to prevent the 500-plus, you know, soccer parents from visiting, but that's not the intent, but we do think we need that use unit when we go in for a building permit on our green space. But we're open to however we might need to massage that to make you more comfortable. In addition to that, our lighting and everything has to be directed downward and away from the neighborhood, so that we don't have any of that light intrusion. Other than that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you all might have.
Thank you, and I was very surprised, Mark had to pull up the map, I was very surprised that this is not in Ward 7 anymore, which seems highly unusual that this is, but then the previous case, way far northwestern, is in Ward 7.
Yeah, my initial response, I was wondering if he was talking to the right person. So, I have, yeah, I think this is a great idea. I mean, I love it. You know, most developments of this type would be doing everything they could to sort of wall themselves off from the neighbors. And we did talk a little bit about whether the applicant is fully appreciative of what it is he's inviting here, because you just, you know, if it's wide open, it's wide open, and you don't know. But there are a couple of questions I have. With respect to the outdoor, the general commercial, community recreation, my biggest concern about it is the lighting. And I think a simple statement that there's no, you know, stadium-style, high-rise, intense lighting, you know, and that even lighting for these areas will be governed by the other language with respect to, you know, lighting standards is fine. I just want it to be very, very clear. And then, I wonder what the term, with respect to the specific plan and final plan, I wonder what the term substantial deviation means?
Sure. So, I think the planning director will have ultimate review of that to ensure it conforms. One of the things that this project started with was a large international planning team that came in and did this exercise. We're now working with a local architecture group, and so some things are shifting around slightly. And so, what we've committed to is you're going to see a project come forward in this general scheme. If this got sold and someone came back with high-rise office buildings, they weren't paying attention to the pond, they can't just come in and reconnect all those streets with vehicular access, that would automatically trigger additional review, because that's not what we're selling you today.
So, but certainly by specific plan stage, I mean, I don't have a problem with there being one sort of controlling master plan as opposed to building by building. I don't have any problem with that. But Jeff, substantial deviation, so as far as I'm concerned, if it's more than you would normally allow for a variation administratively, then it's substantial deviation, so.
Yeah, we've used that language in a handful of other P.U.D.s and PUDs over the years. And Jeff is very competent and well-versed in how to review these applications.
I don't think it's ever come to my attention before, so that's all I have to say on that. I think this is a wonderful idea. I've been through it pretty thoroughly with what's here. There's nothing here that just jumping out at me is problematic in any way, shape, or form. I like the idea of landscaping buffers being used to satisfy screening. I'm all for that. I like the idea of previous paving. You know, we do permit that. Not very many people take us up on it. It's not the, oh, throw down some gravel and call it good thing that most people imagine it is when they really get into the standards and have to start meeting them. It's not a lot less expensive by any means. But for people who are, you know, motivated by the idea of providing. by the idea of providing pervyous paving for ecological reasons, I think it's great, so I'm all for it. If there's not anybody else who has any questions, or anybody else who wants to be heard, I'm ready to move approval.
Yep, think it's great, love the pedestrian connection, love the effort that was made to reach out to the community, so definitely commend you on that. I think we're ready for a motion.
Okay, well then, I will move item number 18, PUD 1975 with the single TE.
Can we get that read into the record one more time? Go ahead, Mark.
Sorry, there was one TE that staff had noted about prohibiting billboards. We were then adding two, one that our signage had to be within 50 feet of the Broadway Extension Service Road.
Right.
And that we were not going to be permitted any stadium-style lighting.
There you go.
Excellent, so two technical evaluations?
Three total.
Three total. One limiting it to, limiting signage to only within 50 feet of?
Broadway Extension.
Broadway Extension, and then explicitly banning stadium lighting.
Exactly right.
Excellent.
And, and there's, a TE already stated that there's no non-accessory signage, so.
Oh, gotcha.
Those three.
Excellent. Commissioner Powers has made the motion to recommend approval to City Council of PUD 1975 with the amended technical evaluations as read into the record. That motion's been seconded by Commissioner Meek. Please cast your votes. And the motion passes. We're in line for item 19.
This is SPUD 1576, application to rezone 105 Northeast 85th Street from PUD 1584 and R1.
Good afternoon, Mark Zitzel with Johnson &amp; Associates. Address is 100 Sheridan Avenue. This is an SPUD to permit a hotel. We would ask for your approval.
That was quick. Do you want to tell us about the, we know that the uses are the same, correct? This is all just being done because of the height?
Correct. The original PUD had established a 100-foot height maximum from the west boundary elevation. We slope away, ultimately that got us up to right under 130 feet. This hotel will be seven stories, and so we've requested the additional height. We're immediately adjacent to a five-story hotel, or sorry, five-story apartment building and parking garage, and we're over 1,500 feet away from the nearest R1 single-family development. I think what you're about to see, maybe your next item, is an application for a new school, and I think their site plan's showing a track walking path up in that area, so we believe it's compatible. We're also immediately south of the American Fidelity Tower.
Excellent. I have no further questions. Are there other questions from commissioners? And there is no one signed up to speak. Excellent, then I think we're just looking for a motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move to recommend approval to City Council of SPUD 1576.
Commissioner Claire moves to recommend approval to City Council of SPUD 1576. That motion's been seconded by Commissioner Powers. Please cast your votes. And the motion passes. We're in line for item 20.
This is PUD 1973, application to rezone 451 East Wiltshire Boulevard from R1 and PUD 936.
Good afternoon, Pervy Patel with Wallace Design Collective, representing the applicant. My address is 410 North Walnut Lane, North Walnut, I'm sorry. This is an application for a PUD for a Oklahoma City Public Schools site for a Belle Isle High School. It is an enterprise school, an application school. We encompass a pretty large area, but the school is proposing keeping most of the development closest to Wiltshire Boulevard. We did have a neighborhood meeting in September before the application was filed. There were several neighbors from the neighborhood to the east that came to the meeting. Some of their concerns were traffic backing up onto their residential streets. There was an exhibit, if, I think, one more, Jared, please, thank you. We have separated bus traffic as well as parent drop-off and pickup traffic on the site, so there wouldn't be as much backup, there wouldn't be any backup onto Musgrave and the residential streets. The bus traffic is off of the entrance into Musgrave, and the parent drop-off pickup would come in from northeast 82nd Street. As I mentioned, the school is closest to Wiltshire Boulevard. The northern portion of the site, which is currently, which was previously Harrison Park, will be a trail for cross-country training and so forth. So with the school, we're not proposing any development to the north. The current entitlements include a large list of uses. We did narrow those down and mimic some of the uses to, from the development to the west that was heard by the planning commission last month. The intention is to develop as a school, but the property owner just wanted to ensure that they had some of their existing entitlements if the school was not able to move forward for whatever reason.
Excellent, and I have met with the applicant on this. I think this is a very exciting development for this space. When I visited with Pervy about this yesterday, I did also say, I'm sure the commission would love to know, it's not going to be traffic on Wiltshire, and they'd love to know that there is a pedestrian connection to all of these great activities happening at the half, so, and all the other amenities that Mark keeps adding to it every planning commission meeting. So I think that this is a great use. I'm very excited about this project. I think it's critical that we retain all of the existing uses in order to ensure that the school, it's possible for the school to be built so that the land can be, can be sold to the school district. So that's all I have. Any questions for commissioners? I know you have a question, Commissioner Powers. Go ahead, Commissioner Claire.
I was going to say, confirm we didn't have anyone signed up to speak.
There is no one signed up to speak.
I'm prepared to make a motion if there's no further discussion.
You sure, Commissioner Powers?
This is me biting my tongue.
Okay, is it about existing uses?
It is.
Commissioner Claire.
I move to recommend approval, City Council of PUD 1973.
Commissioner Claire moves to recommend approval to City Council of PUD 1973. Motion's been seconded by Commissioner Privet. Please cast your votes. And the motion passes. We're in line for item 21.
This is PUD 1977, application to rezone 2501 South High Avenue from PUD 1644.
Pervy Patel, Wallace Design Collective, representing the applicant. Address is 410 North Walnut. This is another application for Oklahoma Public Schools. This is, this is a site for a future middle school, Wheeler Capital Middle School. The Wheeler Middle School is just down the block from here, within the same block, actually, and the idea is this school would replace that school. The site's about 25 acres. Again, we did have a neighborhood meeting before filing the application. There were some neighbors from the north that showed up, from the residential area that did show, with that 50-foot buffer proposed on the north side, that did alleviate their concerns that they had. Some of the surrounding commercial property owners were at the meeting. Their concern was the school buses and pickup currently lining up in the surrounding streets. The existing school doesn't have a dedicated drop-off pickup area, whereas we are proposing that within the school, and so that did answer some of their question, or did answer their concern that they had about backup. I'm available to answer any questions you may have. We do have some site, I'm sorry, we do have some site pictures of the existing, and the existing PUD was approved in October 2017 for some industrial uses. Staff put a TE on this application to remove some of those existing uses. The applicant, or the property owner, would like to retain those uses, again, for the same reason that if this deal with the school did not move forward, they had an opportunity to retain their existing entitlements.
Please build a school.
Thank you, and just again, for the same reasons, deal's not going through unless we keep the uses in there, and these are existing uses, so.
Please build a school. No, I said please build a school.
Yeah, we want the school. Anything from you, Commissioner Privet?
No, for me.
Any questions from commissioners? I've, no one signed up to speak. Then, so we're looking for a motion, Commissioner Privet.
For me?
Uh-huh.
Just fine.
If you're ready.
Which one are we on?
21.
Okay, we've got a couple of them.
PUD 1977.
Oh, yeah, I'll move to recommend approval, approval of PUD 1977.
Commissioner Privet moves to, sorry.
With the deletion.
Of the TEs, yeah.
Deletion of the TEs, yeah.
Commissioner Privet moves to recommend approval to City Council of PUD 1977 and deleting TE, which includes deleting TE1. The motion's been seconded by Commissioner Gauvain. Please cast your votes. And the motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're in line for item 22.
This is SPUD 1561, application to rezone 1101 South Youngs Boulevard from R4, I1, and Stockyards Transitional Development Districts to SPUD 1561.
Good afternoon, Mark Zitzel with J&amp;A, 100 Sheridan Avenue. Before you is an application that we believe to be pretty exciting, both for this area and just the city overall, as it grapples with a housing affordability crisis. Jared, if you could go to the site plan, what we're proposing are 12 units, six duplexes at Southwest 10th and Youngs. It's a pocket neighborhood cottage court-style development. What you don't see on this aerial, immediately to our north, is a outdoor storage lay-down yard with a six- or eight-foot wood stockade fence. There's industrial immediately to our west, and then immediately to our east, there's a home on that aerial. It's actually been torn down. Catholic Charities is building additional services on that block, and their site plan to our east is actually the parking lot and fencing, so we're not immediately adjacent.
Talking about on the other side of Youngs?
On the other side of Youngs, yes.
Okay.
So we're not immediately adjacent to any homes that would face this development, which is one of the reasons why we went with an interior-style development, because the industrial uses around us are not that attractive for the homes to be fronting out on. So this is a unique property in that it sits within the Stockyards urban design overlay. So yesterday afternoon, I traveled down to Stockyards, met in a bank conference room. They don't hold their meetings in this building. Found that out right before. And I think we had a good meeting. I think what we found was the Stockyards Urban Design Committee does not hear zoning cases often. I can't say that this was their first spud, but I think there was a lot of confusion over the process, what their role was, what they were seeking, or what they were being asked to do. Ultimately, after an hour and a half discussion, we were led to a split vote, two to two, over the residential use of this property and what the future of Youngs Boulevard may be, and so it's coming to you today with no recommendation. We would ask for your recommendation of approval. Staff has two TEs in there, one referencing adding parking. Now, if we went by what the code would require for parking, we'd be required 18 parking spaces, which would be about the size lot we would need to build an 18-space parking lot. So meeting code simply doesn't work. We're actually asking for no parking requirement. Given that this is transitional housing and low-income housing that's at max 60% AMI, this is a user that is likely not going to have or own a car, and one thing that Catholic Charities, I think, has been very purposeful and intentful with is locating sites near existing public transit. So within five blocks of this site, there are six Oklahoma City bus stops. There's also talk of regional transit going down this area, so we think this is a perfect spot. It's next to an employment center in Capitol Hill and the Stockyards, but it's also on a bus route right into downtown. So for that reason, we're requesting no parking. And then TE2 was to front the homes onto either 10th or Youngs. I addressed that, given our uses around us. We've really tried to turn it inward. In doing so, what we are agreeable to is doubling the street tree requirement on 10th and Youngs, so that we're still providing an attractive amount of landscaping. And then we also agreed, we are not going to put up a six- or eight-foot site-proof fence to wall it off. The Stockyards District would require a front fence requirement, which is that max of four feet, and we're providing the pedestrian connection out. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, but we'd ask you to strike the two TEs in the staff report and add back doubling the street tree requirement on Youngs, with one caveat that the street trees may be on our property. There's an OGNI transmission line that would not allow us to plant the street trees immediately underneath it. So we're agreeable to landscaping, it just needs to be placed closer and on our property.
Excellent. Any staff comments on the deletion of the TEs before we go to Commissioner Gauvain?
Yes, and Katie Fredels here, who is our urban design manager. Katie, welcome to come up and cover anything I don't, but our concern was that, you know, we hope to see Stockyard City continue to improve, and we feel like that street, the street frontage is important there on 10th Street, especially the entrance coming in from the east is, I think, probably okay in comparison, but the 10th Street, our concern was these, these units are just kind of blank walls, and they really don't address the street very well, which, in my opinion, isn't, you know, super neighborly, so that's one way to do it, the TE. You could turn them around and have them facing, but I do, I do understand the desire to have them interior-facing, and that's, you know, for the sake of community and convenience. There are some architectural things they could do, they could put, you know, additional windows, they could put some kind of roof structure. There are different things they could do to address the street. I think most importantly would be additional windows, just something that would better address the street, because what you see there in those elevations on the left, that's kind of what you would see on the street, so.
If I could.
In our opinion, that was, you know, if you had some more windows, some more, some better treatment on the, on the, on the bottom, it's going to look a little bit better. This is what you see on the interior of the, of the court, like a cottage court.
Yeah, so that's, that's a great point, and I think on a, on a typical development project, working with an architect or designer, we'd have that type of flexibility, and this is one of the things we talked about at the Stockyards Committee yesterday. These are built off-site in a warehouse in Nevada. It's one of the, it'll be the first product of its type that gets brought to Oklahoma City, and so we're really excited about that, but the footprint of this is 375 square feet. So when you think about a 375-square-foot unit, we don't have the luxury or even the ability to add an additional door, to have a side door, to add windows. If we have to do that, we take out a three-foot-wide opening in the kitchen, which then no longer makes it functional. So typically, when we bring these through and we're in Tenpen Military Park, you're dealing with a much larger home, there's different ways that you can start to pay more attention to the street frontage. That's why what we're asking for is that additional landscaping requirement and bringing down the height. The one thing I didn't note, Jared, can you go back to the aerial? These lots are actually platted east to west, so historically, these would have been homes that fronted onto Youngs. What that means is you could have had a single-family home with an eight-foot-high side-yard fence that went all the way up to the front wall. So we have windows on the second floor, we're doing additional landscaping. I think our treatment is potentially better than what could have been there historically, which was an eight-foot wood fence along almost the entirety of the 10th Street frontage.
Thank you, Mark. Commissioner Gauvain?
Okay. This might be interesting, maybe, I don't know. I'm in support of this case. I have reviewed it. At first, I had some concerns on the street-facing versus inward-facing, but I, for this particular development and the way that it's laid out on the site, I think it makes sense as a pocket community, and I support the transitional housing that's, that's being offered here. The parking issue I struggled with a little bit, but I can get, I'm also in support of it without the parking based on what it is. So doubling the, definitely doubling the landscape requirement and allowing some flexibility to where those trees are placed, to me, does a lot to help provide depth and sort of shade and shadow around the development. That helps offer something back to the, as a, as a piece of a neighborhood, as well as that maximum four-foot-high fence that they can put in there, so it's, it's not as if it's a blank wall, so that's just where I am, so I'm in support, but certainly want to hear from everyone else on it.
Certainly think it's persuasive that the homes, if they just put homes there the way it's platted now, it would have been, they would have been facing Youngs, and because I was, I was prepared to be a stickler for the, it needs to address the street. I also think the purpose is really important in the way that Catholic Charities is deliberately developing the area. This makes sense and is, is consistent, so I'm also in support, despite my concerns about the parking, too.
I totally agree with that, you know. I am not one who normally.
You know, I am not one who normally pipes up and says, "People can park on the street," but it is available here. There seems to be plenty of it. But, also, you know, if we apply our addressing the street just across the board, it will never build any pocket neighborhoods. We'll never build any, you know, courtyard neighborhoods. And I definitely think they have a place in the repertoire architecturally. I mean, I definitely do, especially in a case like this. Mark's comment about the use, surrounding use is not very attractive. That's not it for me. This will be a safer configuration for those women that'll live there, actually safer, and it'll feel safer.
Yeah, absolutely. Agree with that.
Mark, is the curb cut going to stay on 10th Street?
I'm sorry?
The curb cut and the little half driveway is my only concern.
It's existing.
Anybody with a car, that's where they're going to park.
Yep.
I would assume.
If we actually had to, we could remove it. I think our intent was to kind of ignore it. We're trying to do an affordable housing project, and all costs do stack up, but if it meant denial, we'd get it removed and put the curb.
I just kind of imagined if I was there, you know, parking somewhere, that's probably where the first place I'd try to go, is that little driveway there, get off the road.
We can agree to remove it.
I got a quick question. I told you you wear boots and a hat yesterday. I heard you that it was a split decision, so it didn't pass. None of us were there, so you know what, why it was split. Was any of it this design issue?
Yeah. I think it was because I didn't wear boots and a hat.
Right.
I think that was it. No. I'm sure Katie can address it. I think the topic you're discussing now of the future of Stockyards, what is it going to be, and then the direction in which the homes were facing, I think there was concern by a couple people of what that meant, so.
Yeah, so, the committee, sorry, Katie Frittl, Planning Department. I'm the Division Manager for Current Planning and Urban Design. I staff the Urban Design Commission along with, or the Stockyards Design Review Committee. And there was, as Mark said, there was lengthy discussion, both about just the process in general, because this committee doesn't see a lot of rezoning applications, the relationship of the rezoning application to a future design review process, because they are staying within the design review district, so they will come back through for a certificate of approval at some point, when they're ready to actually build. There was discussion about parking, there was discussion about the function and use of the property, there was discussion about the design and about the building orientation. They, a motion was, so we had five members present, but one recused himself. There was a motion to approve with the condition that they include essentially the TEs that were in your staff report, that they require one parking stall for every two residential dwelling, or no, they left out the parking from the motion. They were comfortable with the parking, but, sorry, but they included a condition that the buildings be oriented toward the street, and then it was a split vote. So, it was two-to-two, and a motion failed, and they forwarded it on with no recommendation. I think really the committee would have loved to have had another month to pore over it and feel like they understood it better and think about it, but they only meet quarterly typically, so went forward with, without any recommendation.
Right, and typically, we would be agreeable to coming back to a board, but when you meet quarterly, we submitted this application right after their last meeting, so it had been with staff for almost three months. So, a continuance and a deferral would have meant, we're waiting an entire quarter to even get back to you all.
Yeah, that's unreasonable. But, if they're anxious to dive into things, you know, do they want to be on the planning commission? Because we spend a lot of time-
We'll pass that along, yeah.
Any other comments, questions, commissioners?
I have one more question. Mark, what is a lay-down yard?
It's where you take equipment and storage material and lay it down.
Oh, okay. You used that phrase yesterday, and I have no idea what it means, so.
For construction, contractors.
It's just a place, it's just a storage.
Temporary, it's temporary staging area.
It's essentially just storage, but they've got equipment, larger vehicles, larger pieces of equipment that just get laid down in the yard, they come back, pick it up.
Okay, thank you.
I would agree with Mr. Butler's comments on some of the city discussions about windows, and I was trying to not, not try to design their project for them, but, and I understand the points about their tight units, it's a very small footprint, so that's why I didn't, wasn't going to raise that issue personally, but.
It is also kind of interesting that this is sort of this experimental thing, where they're building it off-site and bringing it here. That's going to be interesting to see.
We anticipate that there will be a lot of attention brought to this project, both locally and nationally, because of the product we're using, and then the finishing, the pitched roof, the shutters, things like that, that are going to get added on-site. So, we're pretty excited to see this one happen.
That's great. Anything else? If there's nothing else, I think we're ready for a motion.
Okay. I will move to recommend approval of SPOD 1561, striking TE's 1 and 2, adding a new TE, number 1, I guess it will be, that provides double the city requirement of landscaping on 10th and Youngs, and the landscaping may be located on the private, within the private property zone.
And then, TE2, we agreed to remove the curb cut.
TE2 applicant agrees to remove the curb cut.
Gotcha.
Is the four-foot, I understood the four-foot fence is, if you put a fence, it can only be four, so we don't need a TE for that.
That's correct. That's in the master design statement already.
Okay, so that's covered. And that's the motion.
So, Commissioner Gauvain moves to recommend approval of SPOD 1561 to City Council, that subject to the revised technical evaluations as read into the record. That motion's been seconded by Commissioner Claire. Please cast your votes. And the motion passes. We're in line for item 23.
This is SPOD 1568, application to rezone 112 Northwest 15th Street from R4, UCD Conservation and HL Landmark Overlay to SPOD 1568.
Good afternoon. Caitlin Turner, 522 Call Cord Drive, here on behalf of the applicant. The application in front of you is to allow for a townhome development to be plotted and sold. You can see the surrounding area is predominantly R4, and then there's also some C4 to the south and to the east. This application was heard by the Historic Preservation Commission on November 1st, where it was recommended for approval unanimously. We would like to request one modification to the south setback to five feet. It does a 20-foot alley and then commercial. I also spoke with Ms. Frittl, who had no concern with that change. Staff recommends approval with four TEs. We agree to number 1, 2, and 3. The fourth one, we have addressed in the most recent version of the master design statement. That's to specify regulations for subdivision, which, again, we've addressed in Section 4 of the master design statement. So, we would request that that one be stricken, since it's already been dealt with. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Just to be clear, you're saying you want it stricken because you've already met it?
Correct.
Okay.
And it's the first section, number 4. You can see where we've addressed frontage and lot size and things like that for plating.
I like the color rendering, too. Commissioner Gauvain?
Sure. Yeah, and once again, I mean, I'm in support of the case. Who am I to argue with HP if they've unanimously approved? I must be great. Is there any confusion or uncertainty on the setback? Is, we're striking TE4, which isn't talking about setbacks, but as I understood, there was some conversation, so is everything clear on which building you can align with, or?
Oh, for the front yard setback?
Yeah, could you just let us know? Yeah, on the front yard setback, is there any, is that all clear? Can you tell me what that is?
Yeah, so essentially, we have the properties surveyed. The, they're wanting that continuity in front yard setback along 15th. The property immediately to the east and immediately to the west have different front yard setbacks. So, we went with 15 or whichever is less to meet the front yard setback of one of those budding lots. So, we believe, in essence, we have already addressed that, but we're happy to revise the language for the front yard setback specifically to meet, to match at least one of the adjacent properties on the east or west.
Just curious, what was the difference?
It's two-to-three inches difference.
Okay.
Okay, so it's really not a concern. We can just leave TE3 stand.
Correct. Yeah, that's not an issue.
I just wanted to make sure we didn't need to deal with anything there. So, well, like I said, I'm in support. Is there any other questions or comments from others? Somebody else? Well, then, I will move to recommend approval of SPOD 1568 with TE's 1, 2, and 3 as written, and striking TE4.
And then, we're adding a TE5?
Yes, for the five-foot south yard setback.
And adding TE5 to allow a five-foot setback on the alley side?
Yes.
Excellent. Commissioner Gauvain moves to recommend approval to City Council of SPOD 1568, subject to the changes to the technical evaluations as read into the record. That motion's been seconded by Commissioner Meek. Please cast your votes. And the motion passes. Thank you. We're in line for item 24.
This is SPOD 1575, application to rezone 4400 Southwestern Avenue from C3 and R1.
Good afternoon. David Box, 522 Call Cord Drive. This application is for an SPOD behind what is now a vacant site. It was a Sears department store. My client is converting that to personal storage. If you're familiar with the area, there's been some really good redevelopment ongoing over the last several years. Immediately to the west of Western is the large Southwest Medical Complex. So, it, behind what was the Sears building is an area where there were parking and overhead bays. For whatever reason, it was zoned R1, and no one ever caught it. So, what we're hoping to do is zone this in a way to allow storage of fleet vehicles. You'll notice on the site plan, what we have proposed is an eight-foot-tall fence, and then heavy landscaping on the outside of the fence on that alley side, where it's immediately adjacent to single-family. No protests, I'm aware of. There are no technical evaluations.
We do have one person signed up to speak.
Different one.
So-
Kind of a little different.
Maybe we should get to that, or do we want to? Any comment, Commissioner Privet, before we get to?
I'd like to hear from the protester, for sure. This one's kind of a different one.
Excellent. It is Ms. Bida Christian. You have five minutes to address the commission. And please give us your name and address for the record.
It's Bida Christian, 648 Southwest 41st. So, I guess, since the Sears building is empty, and how this was worded on the notice, it says for permit parking and vehicle storage. Is that for whatever business is going to go into the building where Sears was, or is that for a separate entity they're storing vehicles at?
It's accessory to the personal storage use. When my client looks at the site, they look at it as one entire envelope, and for whatever reason, that was zoned R1, so it'll be accessory to that personal storage.
You don't have to rezone the Sears.
Right, everything else is zoned C3, for whatever reason, even though it's been, it was the back of house for Sears, and used in a commercial manner with large overhead bays for many, many years, but it was never noticed by anyone that that was zoned single-family. So, we're going to enclose it with an eight-foot cedar fence, and then put all the landscaping on the east side of that fence. There's already, I think it's about a 10-to-15-foot green belt that exists, where the overhead transmission line runs north to south. So, in addition to that, you will have this landscaping, and then that eight-foot-tall fence to bring it all into one tract.
So, it's for the same entity that owns the building? It's not like someone coming in, storing vehicles?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from commissioners? If not, I think we're ready for a motion. Commissioner Privet?
We'll move to recommend approval of SPOD 1575.
Commissioner Privet moves to recommend approval to City Council of SPOD 1575. The motion's been seconded by Commissioner Meek. Please cast your votes. Has everyone voted?
Yeah.
There we go. And the motion passes. We're in line for item 25.
This is SPOD 1567, application to rezone 501 West Memorial Road from SPOD 824 to SPOD 1567.
Once again, David Box, 522 Call Cord Drive. The application before you is a bit unique in that the current spud on the site allows for auto sales, and that's what we're trying to do. The only reason we're before you is to increase the height of our sign. If you're familiar with Memorial Road, at this stretch, you have signs that are in excess of the height that we see, which is 24 feet. To the west, we have Amedis Galleria, which has a substantial sign, both in size and height. Then, you have a series of car dealerships on the south side of Memorial. So, in fact, we already have a certificate of occupancy on the building for the auto sales. This will be for Lincoln dealership. Jared, could you just play the sign? It's exhibit, there we go. So, it is worth noting that the sign, in terms of square footage, is under the requirement within the moratorium. So, again, this is just for height. There is a TE, we cannot agree to it. The TE, excuse me, we can agree to all of the TEs, except for the one that requests an eight-foot masonry wall. Jared, could you cycle through to the, so we have a, this is good. We have a unique circumstance here to our north, where instead of it being backyards for residential uses, it's actually a service alley. So, it has access to their garages, and then where trash pickup occurs. So, we have already installed a sign, which is complying with the current zoning. It's an eight-foot tall, excuse me, fence. It's an eight-foot metal fence, and landscaping has been provided. We took this picture this week. Jared, if you could cycle through. So, here's a view from Google Earth, showing you what the, that alley looks like. Again, it's more of a service corridor, and this was taken this week, showing the fence that's there with the landscaping. We think the fence, coupled with what's immediately adjacent to us, that it is compatible. So, we cannot agree to that TE. Again, we're only here for the sign.
Staff want to comment on the masonry wall, in light of these, this information? Jeff, Sarah, or you all are good?
Sarah Welsh, Planning Department. We copied that from the existing SPOD. That was the, we just, we were just carrying it over from the existing zoning.
Gotcha. The masonry wall?
Yes.
Okay.
So, that's TE3.
I'm fine with removing TE3. It seems consistent with the way that the rest of the development is on Memorial, so, and looks like a pretty good way of separating things there, but other thoughts, commissioners? We have no one signed up to speak. Please, no, you're good.
We're just here for the sign.
We're just here for the sign. I know that's your favorite thing, Commissioner Powers, is to talk about signs. It's a cool sign. Did you even see the guy was wearing a suit standing next to the sign?
Yeah, the giant sign.
It's like, do I have to be wearing a suit to buy a Lincoln? Is that how that, that works?
I think it's a requirement.
Matthew McConaughey right there.
Right?
It's Mark.
It's Mark, yeah. Any other questions, commissioners? We can, we can go ahead, we need a motion.
All right. We don't have anyone signed up to speak?
Nope.
Okay. I'll move to recommend approval to City Council of SPOD 1567, deleting TE3. Subject to technical evaluations, deleting TE3.
Commissioner Claire moves to recommend approval to City Council of SPOD 1567, subject to the amendments to the technical evaluation, deleting TE3. That motion's been seconded by Commissioner Powers. Please cast your votes.
I'm green.
I'm green.
I'm green.
Did you get it?
I did.
So, Commissioner, Commissioner Meek votes yes. And the motion passes. We're in line for item 26.
This is C7595, final plat of Coventry Park, located south of East Memorial Road and east of North Midwest Boulevard.
Good afternoon. Mark Zitzel with Johnson &amp; Associates, addresses Winnie Sheridan Avenue. Before you is a final plat that should look pretty similar. We recently had the preliminary plat approved. Through that, there were a lot of negotiations with the neighbors. This plat reflects all of those. Earlier this week, we were contacted by City Attorney's Office with concern over the TE language that was approved with the preliminary plat. And so, there was concern about the tree preservation easement. I don't know if you recall, we committed to a tree preservation easement. noted that the city would maintain it, and ensure that it is... Its existence would be maintained along that south boundary line with Jared's mobile hand. Thank you. And there was just concerns over the enforcement of that and what that meant. So, with the aid of Mr. Kelly Work, who represented the neighbors, Municipal Counselor's Office, we modified the language to where now I believe everyone is comfortable. We've resubmitted this plat back to staff with the corrected language. But I was asked just to read it in for the record, which... So, the easement will read, "The tree preservation easement shown on Coventry Park shall be maintained by each individual lot owner. The purpose and intent of the easement is to protect the natural habitat and existing tree canopy from further building or improvement encroachment by leaving the area in its natural condition. Undergrowth may be maintained so long as the existing tree canopies are preserved. Enforcement shall be managed through the City of Oklahoma City's Building Permit and Review Process and Coventry Park covenants, conditions, and restrictions to prevent new buildings or improvements within the tree preservation easement, or any elimination of healthy, mature trees. The lot owner shall have the right to remove dead, fallen, or red cedar and cottonwood trees if so desired." So, with that language being corrected, there were four TEs. We agreed to all of the TEs. One clarification is needed on our end, which is that we will be sprinkling each one of the homes based on the subdivision requirements. And so, we'll note that on the plat prior to the Mylar being finalized. So, with that, happy to answer any questions.
So, we need to have that language that you just read in added as a TE? Or how does that need to be incorporated?
We were reading it in for the record. It's already been resubmitted to staff.
Gotcha. This is in my ward. I think it's a testament to some great work and compromise, and I know it was not easy. So, I certainly appreciate Kelly. Certainly appreciate your work, Mark. And I don't know if there are any neighbors here, but I know it's been a long haul. And so, I just appreciate everyone's patience and effort. I'm in support, and I don't... We don't have anybody else signed up to speak.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move to recommend or to approve item C7595, subject to the technical evaluations.
Commissioner Claire moves to approve of C7595. The motion's been seconded by Commissioner Meek. Please cast your votes. And the motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're in line for item 27.
This is PUD 1970, application to rezone 3778 South Check Hall Road from PU...
Good afternoon. David Box, 522 Call Cord Drive. The PUD before you is to take what was originally approved in PUD 1782 and get a new PUD approved to modify the R1 regulations to allow smaller lot sizes. The current PUD does allow lot sizes that are sub 6,000 square feet, so we're seeking to make them smaller here. We do agree, however, where we are adjacent to the east and the south, where we're adjacent to the larger lots, that we do conform to standard R1. There are two technical evaluations, both of which we agree to. Happy to answer any questions.
Excellent. This is in Ward 3, Commissioner Meek.
Yes. We spoke about this. I've looked into it. From what I see, out of the... We had three in a row coming up. Now, we only have this one and the next case that are kind of the same animal. This one's the best of the bunch, because they have got both... They've done the 3,600-square-foot lots, where they're asking for the 30-foot. But where it does a but, like David said, they went to the 6,000-square-foot lots that are 50-foot. Having a mix, I would prefer that there was more of a mix of the 50-foot lots around the perimeter of the neighborhood. I believe that these 30-foot lots, they're going to put a strain on emergency services. I believe they're going to put a strain on the school system. I just believe they're just trying to put more lots in, to bring in more cells of... I understand... I understand affordable housing is an issue. I kind of wish if affordable housing was the issue, and you wanted to build a 20-foot-wide home, you could do that on your 50-foot lot to make it more affordable. I just don't... I'd like to see... I'd like to ask, possibly ask staff, some of the issues that come up with the 30-foot-wide lots being proposed.
That's the Segways Utility Department. One of the reasons that we've been having issues in trying to get creative for these 30-foot lots is the utilities and the water meters and everything in front of it. By the time you get the driveways, the mailbox, and try and get everything in the proper separation of getting the water meters in front of the person's lot without getting into a driveway or concrete is very hard. And especially gets when you have the sanitary sewer in the front, and you have to get separations between the sewer connections and the water connections, proper separation from them from the plumbing code. Sometimes it's not impossible, but it's very, very difficult, because everything gets over the top of one another. And then for the future residences, if they ever need to repair that, then it's more trouble and harder for them to make the repair to their private service system. Looking at these, I would recommend going to 40-foot lots. I'm comfortable with 40-foot lots, widths lots. That's my opinion, to be able to help get everything in there. But it's up to the engineer to be able to make sure to meet all the proper spacing requirements and everything as required by city code and our utilities department regulations in order to get everything to fit. And if they can't get it in 30-foot-wide lots, then that's up to the engineer to be able to figure out.
And if we can't, we can't. But we're confident that we can fit it all within 30-foot lots. There's nothing within the code that says you can't. And in fact, we're in downtown Oklahoma City, where 25-foot lots are developed routinely. And somehow, through the magic of engineering, they figure it out. So, if we can't find a way to do it, well, then ultimately, the city's utility department or Public Works Department could say no. But we're confident that we can build this and comply with all of the requirements that utilities and Public Works will put onto us. The reality is, this is a very desirable product, because when you have 6,000-square-foot lot, you really can't put a sized home that we're trying to put here. The lot cost is just too expensive. You lose the element of affordability. When you have the size home we're proposing, the lots just shrink. This is the trend that we're seeing. It's supported by the comprehensive plan. It's providing a kind of diversity of housing within one neighborhood. This is tucked back in the back of an existing and ongoing neighborhood. So, we think it offers a product that is highly desirable in Oklahoma City. And we are confident that we will be able to work with utilities and Public Works as we move towards permitting.
David, I've seen... I see that you've got the wider lots along Novak, which is the east. And I see you've got them on the south. My question is, on the west side of this triangle, those lots are those existing 30-foot lots that are abutting on that left side?
I believe there are 4,200 square-foot lots to the west. 4,800 to the west.
Okay. That's what I was thinking. They're not 30s either.
Being R1-based, they're required... Each lot's going to have two trees at least, right?
Yes, sir. And we're not varying the separation between homes, right? So, whether it's 6,000 square foot or 3,200 square feet, it'll be 10 feet between structure, just like in a standard R1.
I think I'm curious on... I don't think I'm fully following the concern from a public... From a fire or public safety standpoint. I'm not understanding how this would be any different than if I built an apartment complex on the northern part of this site and had hundreds of people living in a small and confined space.
I equate a 30-foot lot to the same size as half a duplex. But in this case, you're trying to offset five foot on each side and sell it. And it just, to me, it just puts... It puts more traffic, more cars on the street. Utility nightmare. And I just believe it's just... No matter what the developers say, in my opinion, it's not for affordable housing. It's to make more money. And I just don't like it. I don't like it in my ward. And I just wish it had a better mix of... I'm not against a couple of rows of 30-foot mixed use. And like I said, this one, this case, better than the others to follow, has a little bit of that. And I'm open to other comments, suggestions from other commissioners.
Well, Commissioner Pennington, just to comment on you. I mean, the apartment development is a whole different animal with regard to utilities, is the thing. So, they're not serving each unit with its own dedicated service from the city main. So, that's why that...
Oh, I definitely get the utility thing. The utility part makes sense. The part that doesn't make sense to me is the congestion, that concept. I don't understand how... I would think that... And it's similar to what we approved last planning commission meeting. On the north side, Mark represented them, where we did all these series of single-family homes as opposed to having an apartment complex. And obviously, those homes didn't meet the same kind of standards as far as the lot width, because it's all being rented out. But I don't think we were concerned when we did that review about, you know, the ability to bring in fire trucks, or, you know, serve those communities in that way. Obviously, it solved the utility issue, because it was only a single, you know, end user there, but...
I agree. No, I agree. That makes a different point. The issue that I have is that you just end up... Potentially end up with a row of garages. You got to... You have nothing... You have no more frontage than a garage. If it's a double Y, if it's a two-car garage, that becomes not a very strong community or sense of community. And that's where my concern is. I can understand single-car garages in this with the narrow lots, and there's lots of good examples of that type of development. So, it's not like I'm against that. I don't have a problem with 30 feet and certain issues. But I agree with Commissioner Meek as well. It's all about how you... Where you put them, and what kind of volume, how long is the stretch, and how, you know... So, I'm a little unsure.
So, it sounds like in this particular... I know we've got a series of cases about this. But it sounds like in this particular instance, there's consensus that this is an appropriate number of these lots. That it's an appropriate mix. Is that what the consensus is?
Yeah, I'll agree with... I mean, I'll agree to that point that in David's case here, in this case specifically, there's a mix. It's still bringing in 332 lots. And if you look all the way around this in Ward 3, it's big acreages. This is just... And I know for 30-foot-wide lots and more density, there's areas. Areas, this fits well. Other wards, other areas. This addition has came in. Its previous phases don't have any 30-foot lots in them. And it already was a big change, a big shock to the area, where the area is surrounded in acreages. Ward 3 is urban sprawl, period. And I will tell you that to continue the second phase of this neighborhood and infill this spot, if it would have been like the one above it, I wouldn't have a word to say about it. But changing to the 30-foot-wide lots, where I concur, it's just a garage door, especially if it has a house above it. You just get a one-car garage door with very little lateral stability. You're going to have to portal frame those doors to hold that sheer wall up. It's a... That's a whole nother construction issue. But I do know the utilities would be nightmares, and I know a nightmare. And I know that we don't have any protesters. I understand that fact, but...
If I could comment. So, we're now talking about things that are kind of outside the confines of a pud. We're talking about what it's going to look like. This is not a design review district. This is... We're talking use, and we're talking compatibility with density. Construction standards, whatever the city tells us we have to do, a permit review is what we're going to have to do. I'm confident that my client can figure out what the city code requires. And again, if utility says, "The way that you've got it laid out in your permit," well, they can tell us no. We're going to comply with everything that utilities tells us to comply with, permit review tells us to comply with, and Public Works tells us to comply with. But in terms of not wanting to see a garage door, you know, some cities have an ordinance that requires certain design of garages and certain percentages to not be front-facing. We don't have that. Whether these are 6,000-square-foot or 20,000-square-foot lots, or 3,200-square-foot lots, it absolutely has no relevance to what the house is going to look like. Every single one of those could be a single-lane, front-facing garage. It could be that now. The current PUD could be that. This simply allows for a mix of different housing types that is not in this area. This area is fastly expanding. You can see dirt moving to the south and east. That's a high-density R1. You've got this whole quarter section to the west, to the north and west. This is consistent, compatible with what you see happening in this part of Oklahoma City.
I agree, and their minimum lot sizes were 40-foot.
I have to say, I have some concerns with the lot widths in terms of proximity. Just getting down the street, with people parking in the street. I agree with Dan's comments about I've seen the single garage widths. But getting to, I don't know, it just seems like an awful lot of if... Potential for a lot of cars with not a lot of room to maneuver and park. And to the compatibility, I also have some concerns with... We're putting very small lot sizes against, again, acreages, and there's no transitional density. It's just one extreme to the other. But I also understand the need for the product type. So, I'm kind of mixed on it.
So, we do require that along the south and the east, we do have standard R1 lots. So, we have ensured that where adjacent to larger lots, we do not have the smaller style. We have traditional standard R1.
Under the compatibility, there's a note that says, "The plat proposes 6,000-square-foot lots along the southern and eastern boundaries, but code would normally require 7,500 square feet." So, there's even issues with that one.
So, that's a subrag, and that is... Correct me, Jeff, but it's a quirk in the subrags to where the 75% requirement doesn't apply if you're adjacent to AA.
I'm not sure about that. I know there's a limitation on...
Well, I can just tell you, we don't have a variance in our plat as it relates to lot size.
Sarah Welch, Planning Department. So, in R1 districts, when you abut another platted subdivision at 75% or 7,500 square feet, their existing PUD, though, modified that and allows 6,000 square foot along the south and the east. So, they're not changing that.
Okay, so it was already taken care of in 1782?
Well, it was... It allows those smaller lots, but I think the existing PUD also... I mean, it does not allow the smaller lots, the 3,000-some-odd.
If this were zoned R1 today, they would be required to do 7,500-square-foot lots along the south. And I believe the east of that's platted. I'll have to look at my notes. But the PUD that was recently approved modified that to 6,000.
All right. Where are we, commissioners? Sounds like there's some concern about the number of these 30-foot lots.
Can I ask a question?
Please.
Can we find out what the dwelling units per acre was in PUD 1970? The original? Or, sorry, PUD 1782?
Right, right. So, 1782 has three tracks. Track 2 is 6,000 square foot. Track 3 is 4,800 square feet. Do you know what the total?
4,800 square-foot lots and a portion, a portion of which we're rezoning through this. So, if the number is a concern, right now, we're proposing 291 of that size lot. We could limit it to no more than 200 of that size lot, if that eases concerns.
Thoughts?
Every little bit helps, right? Yeah.
Then we got connection questions coming.
And we're going to agree to the connection. We will agree, so we can delete that TE. We're not going to seek the variance.
That's good.
So, yeah, we can, in the pud, limit PUD 1970 to allow no more than 200 of the 30-foot lots. So, that would be reducing down by 91 lots.
Okay. I think that's pretty good.
Where would those be, David?
We'd have to show you on a final plot. We'd have to come back.
Oh, well, that's right. We've got a prelim after this one.
Yeah, we'll come back with a plot, of course.
I'm good with that. Okay. Then we're just looking for a motion, Commissioners. And that's gonna include the addition of TE Three, limiting the 30-foot width lots to no more than 200. That's poor phrasing. We will be, the PUD is limited to 200 lots maximum. That could be 30-foot width.
All right. I'm gonna move to recommend approval of PUD 1970 with the existing two TEs, adding TE Number Three, no more than 200 of the 30-foot lots.
Commissioner Meek moves to recommend approval of PUD 1970 to City Council, subject to the additional technical evaluation. That motion's been seconded by Commissioner Goveen. Please cast your votes.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're in line for Item 28.
Item 28 is KC 7593, preliminary plat of the Cove at Creekside Village, located south of Southwest 29th Street and east of South Check Hall Road, in a variance to Section 5.3.1.1D.15 of the subdivision regulations.
Before you start, David, I'm gonna step out for one second.
David Box, 522 Call Core Drive. This is the associated plat. So in terms of the, we agree to all the TEs. TE Two can be deleted. We are not seeking the variance. We will connect, and we should probably add a TE on this one, that there is no more than 230-foot lots within this development. And you'll see the specific location of those at final plats. Not me.
Okay.
Who's the chair? Who am I looking at here?
Yeah. So, we have any discussion on this?
So we'd be deleting TE Number Two. Would we need to add the, another TE for the preliminary plat about the 30-foot lots, or that was handled in the last one?
No, we would go ahead and add that.
Okay. Okay. Anybody got any comments before?
I don't, do we have anyone signed up to speak on this? Nope. I think we're ready for a motion.
Okay. I move to approve C 7593 with TE Two being removed and replaced with TE that reads no more than 200 of the 30-foot lots allowed.
So I have a motion from Commissioner Meeks to approve the application, subject to the amended technical evaluation. So I have a second. It's been seconded by Commissioner Noble. Please cast your votes. All right, pass this.
Thank you.
Thank you. Takes us to next item, Item 29.
This is PUD 1974, application to rezone 9,002, Southwest 15th Street, from R1.
Good afternoon. Mark Zitzel with Johnson &amp; Associates, address is One East Sheridan Avenue. Before you is a similar concept, in that we're seeking 30-foot lots. I'm gonna provide some background and color here. This is part of what is known as the Bellflower Neighborhood. What you are seeing are Phases Three and Four. So while we were proposing 30-foot lots as a minimum, within Phases Three and Four, there are some that are larger, but everything to our south is a minimum of 50 feet. We filed this preliminary plat application last year. Phases One and Two are under development. We've worked with the neighborhood very closely. They're aware. We've sent them these plans. In addition, our developers actually paying to construct a traffic circle on their street where we stubbed in, to ensure that there's traffic calming for the residents in our neighborhood that may venture south. So we feel we've been very good neighbors. We've been in constant communication. I don't know if anyone is here, if anyone's signed up on this. So we've shared them this plan. Ultimately, Phases Three and Four, we're seeking about a 75-unit increase overall. I think when we look at this, you know, we have a housing study that the city paid for that calls for additional one- and two-bedroom homes. When we do this, a lot of these units have the potential to be two-bedroom homes. We're trying to fill a market need. Our density is wholly in compliance with the comprehensive plan. I think we're around six and a half. And I almost feel there's a misconception about a 30-foot wide lot, single-family home. I'm borrowing Brad's renderings here, because they're similar of what you can fit on a 30-foot wide lot. It is a one-car garage. But this is in no way different than a duplex on a 60-foot wide lot. It's two units that are just detached, which offers a different product type than we typically see. It also breaks up the garage frontage that you'd see in those neighborhoods. On a duplex on a 50- or 60-foot wide lot, that'd be straight R2, you're gonna see that full 40 feet of garage door. Because of this product type and the floor plans, it doesn't lend itself to that. So you get a little bit of a front porch, you get that front door entrance that's not on the side, which you would commonly see in duplex neighborhoods. You know, I won't take exception that you think the last case, 30-foot lots, is the best one. We believe this one to be it. You know, we have this exact product type going on the ground right now in northwest Oklahoma City, in the Edmund School District, just north of Crossing's Church. That's been approved through the Utilities Department. Those utilities are going in the ground now. We're doing it in Norman as well. It's a unique product type that is trying to hit an underserved market in this metro area. We worked through all of those utility issues that were just brought up. While it's challenging and it's hard, it doesn't mean it's not possible. So our firm, Brad's team, they've, we've done this. We know how to do it. We know how to work with utilities to get it done. So in that regard, we have no concern that we're not gonna be able to meet the utility requirements as we move forward with this project. So with that, we have one TE about the placement of garages. We agree to that, but we would ask for your recommendation of approval.
Thank you, Mark. Maybe you might address your issue on the screening, the fence and screening first, Commissioner Meek?
Yep, thank you. Just 'cause something can be done sometimes doesn't mean it should. I don't like the 30-foot lots. I'm gonna stick with that mindset. I understand, once again, this is an existing addition. Construction to the south has already begun. I have a great concern on, and I did a quick count, and I've got 65, 65 lots on the 30-foot lot spacing that abut a main thoroughfare. What I see in the future is every 30-foot, there's someone that owns a piece of fence. And if we don't address a masonry-type screening that is the same all the way around, this is gonna be a mess, that every person that drives down 15th, every person that drives down County Line is gonna have to be looking at whoever's 30-foot fence fell in six, seven, eight years from now, and it's gonna be a big mess. And that's a, that's a big concern for me. I'll be honest with you, it would be a concern for me if it was 50-foot lots. I believe that they're writing a, writing a PUD doesn't alleviate you from a minimum subdivision requirement for a screening on arterial roads. I believe that should be in there, in my ward, everywhere, if I could have it. And this one concerns me more because, and I'm not knocking that the people that are gonna buy these 30-foot lots, they're gonna be lower income. This is affordable housing. These are the people that are gonna be least likely to be able to repair their fences when they blow down. And so I do have that concern.
If I may, I don't think that's a fair representation, that someone who purchases a home won't be able to afford to maintain it. So I don't think that's fair. I don't know that there's a subdivision regulation requirement for masonry walls or fences along arterials. This is an exact condition that you'd see along any duplex development, along any 50-foot wide lot. So we're not seeking anything different there. What we're asking for, when we started this project, interest rates and the market was vastly different. What we're seeing now are people that could have afforded a 50-foot wide lot, two years later, six months later, can't afford it anymore. So they are now priced entirely out of the market. So when you have great school districts, access to amenities, which there's a new city park going across the street, you have desirable places to live, and we are pricing folks out. Product like this allows them to get into homeownership, which allows them to build wealth, and allows them access to the amenities the city is paying to put in. So I struggle with the idea that, you know, it's not about who's gonna live there. It's, it sounds like you're afraid they're not gonna be able to maintain it. I don't know that that's fair. I think there are wealthy neighborhoods around the town that you've seen fences fall in when you're driving down an arterial street.
But to be clear, there is screening that would be required along those lots, along 15th, right?
Absolutely. You'll see.
And then there'd be the standard required landscaping, too.
Absolutely. When we, final plat, we always provide what's called the subdivision buffer plan. It shows our landscaping, which always meets code. It shows our entry. This is a boulevard, so you'll see gateway signage. And then you'll see the fence material. On this one, we're continuing on with what we've done. It's not changing because of the lot size, but it's a treated wood fence with masonry columns. So it's gonna continue. I think that's an important part. We're not changing the aesthetic or the landscaping treatments, just because we're going to a smaller lot size.
I didn't know what your originals were. So that does help. You're gonna have brick columns with treated cedar in between.
Correct. And this, these two sections of the neighborhood also have full access to the same amenities that we were planning in Phases One and Two.
Is that fence privately owned by each 30-foot lot owner?
Yes, and it's the same on the 50-foot lots, too.
Yeah.
So you space the columns on the property lines, and one intermediate in between, or?
We try to, but they're not, the columns are not spaced out at 60-foot spacing. They'd be pretty close.
That's what I'm getting at. I'm not gonna be guilted in being the bad guy here, that I hate 30-foot lots and the people that buy them, and I'm not saying anything about those type of people. I'm saying that when you take a area that obviously, and I understand, there will be a day where the interest rates are better, and things are better, and this, this need will be not as bad, and those people will sell these houses and move up to bigger and better, and hopefully, these will be as affordable as an apartment is right now. My point is, it is more dense than I believe should be allowed. That's my opinion.
Sure. I respect that opinion. I would say that staff has reviewed this, and it's in conformance with what the city put forth in a comprehensive plan in terms of density for an area. We're trying to provide an additional housing type, which I believe, if we went back to the record for Planning Commission, when we brought this forward, was, because this was employment reserve, and the city did not want us to have R1 50-foot wide lots here. And they said, "It'd be different. You're not proposing a mix of housing types. You're providing one suburban-style housing type." Now here we are, fast forward two years, we're proposing an additional unit type and different, a different lot size, and now we're being told, "No, we don't like that." We're in conformance of the comprehensive plan that this body oversees and consistently upholds.
Yeah, I think I'm of the opinion, and I certainly, it's very different, being someone who represents a ward that is in the urban core of Oklahoma City. So I know that my sensibilities are different than those people who live in further parts of the city. But in terms of our values, I think that this decision to, potentially, to have the 30-foot lots mixed in with other varying types of lot sizes is important for us to allow people to be able to take advantage of different lifestyles, no matter what part of Oklahoma City you're in. So I'm in support. And I continue to ask, so that I can fully understand the compelling challenges for this area in particular that are created as a result of having these 30-foot lots. And I still don't think I've heard anything that we haven't been able to address directly, other than a discomfort with the, with the number of 30-foot lots that are being proposed. So, I mean, that's my take, but, I mean, I'm open. Where's the Commission on this? Where are we? Are we saying we wanna limit, or are we uncomfortable with the number? Are there others who are with me that think the number is okay? I know we've heard, I know Commissioner Meek is opposed to this. Other thoughts?
What's the total number of lots on this?
311 in this section.
And about 6.65?
Correct. And so what you just heard is a case that I think is different, in that we are already part of an existing subdivision that has different lot sizes, which is why on this one, you're not seeing a blended. We already have a blended neighborhood. Additionally, not all of those lots are exactly 30 feet. Some are 40. We're using the existing approved street grid that we had in the, in the original preliminary plat. So you can see the blocks that go north-south, those are wider lots than what are south. So I don't have the exact breakdown yet, because we haven't gotten to the preliminary plat stage on, on this new piece, but we're continuing to mix and blend lot sizes as we go north.
Yeah, I mean, if you build a quality product, you get a quality, livable community, and it's all about design. And I recognize that's not our purview here. The images that Mr. Zitzel showed are great images of good housing. That is a product type that we do need. And I don't think there's any specific type of person. Some people just don't want a bigger home, don't wanna maintain a bigger home, and it fits their lifestyle. So I don't think that it necessarily implies it's a, you know, a lower quality or lower-income product, per se. So that's not affecting my judgment at all. I do not fully appreciate the concern on city staff with utilities and how difficult that is, but I have to take the fact that you can design it, you can do it, and through, and engineer it, and it is approvable through the permit process. And that's, so that sort of kills that point for me, and says that's a problem that they have to deal with either way. So I'm having trouble really finding a reason to not be supportive of this, considering the variety in, that's already built into the neighborhood.
And I will offer to any planning commissioner that when homes come out of the ground at Parkway Square, which is up north, we will happily take anyone through, so you can see how this is shaping up. Personally, I'm building a 19-foot wide home, not too far from here. I will take anyone through, so you can see what a 19-foot wide home feels like. It's actually very livable, and it's a, it's a unique and different floor plan, and just, it's a different product that we don't typically see in this market, but I still think is a viable option for folks.
How many homes are in your addition?
So it's mostly undeveloped. I think right now, there are five homes under construction that are all 20 feet wide, because we have to adhere to the sideyard setbacks and fire code.
Right. My main issue is that this is 311, and with the street design not being changed, this has simply come back and said, "Hey, we wanna build more houses in this addition." That's my main issue. I look at downtown areas and older neighborhoods that were, from the very beginnings, the 1900s, they were 25-foot lots. I understand that. What happens in those areas? They bulldoze. People buy two or three lots and build a house, because 20-foot houses are not the norm. They're just not.
Yeah. I'll just share, in my neighborhood, I hope people don't buy three and put in one home. There's a lot of vacant land. We hope to see several hundred more units, hopefully in the excess of 1,000, new units that get built there. I just, again, it's a unique product type, but I don't think it's not compatible. I think what we're doing, and I take a little bit of exception to the idea that this is just about someone making money. Well, I think all development, at some point, everyone's home was done for someone to make a profit on, including when you resell it.
Agreed.
We're in a market where the consumer can no longer afford it. So if we don't change it, the housing crisis gets worse by not putting any more units on the ground, which is what will happen. And that's not a threat. It's just, when you look at these types of developments, they will sit until the market rebounds, which means no new units are getting put on the ground, which exacerbates the cost. So, you know, the last thing I'll share, this is on the rental side, which this product is not, but through COVID, from 2020 to 2023, Oklahoma City saw 24% increase in the rental rates. We just came from Minneapolis on a ULI trip. Through COVID, they saw a 1% increase in their rental rates, and the for sale product was not vastly different. The reason is, their city has pushed density across its entirety to see product like this, product like the cottage courts we looked at earlier, and they've been encouraging building. And through the building boom, they built enough that prevented drastic increases in the cost. Our city clearly is not doing that, because we're seeing massive increases in the sale price and the rental. And I think, while maybe for developers or builders, like, the higher price is good, or an existing homeowner, that's great, you're building equity, but for anyone that isn't already in a home? already in a home, it is detrimental and locks you out likely in perpetuity if we don't do something now. We believe this is the type of product that does that.
Can I make a-
Please.
Clarification. On the design and the purview of the commission, so it's true that normally in an R1 district or a standard base zoning district, state statute says that, you know, we don't have the authority to get to the design level on single-family homes. But that's different when it comes to PUDs. So the Planning Commission does have some level of ability to have some influence. So I think it is appropriate to say that you have concerns about, you know, garages and alleys and so forth. You know, that, a PUD is a special case, and the developers can come forward and negotiate, as we all know. They can say, "Well, granted that we have, we want a higher density, but this is what we're giving in exchange for that," whether it be open space or some kind of design modifications.
Right. I've dealt with the area that was building for a client, the PUD said it had to match a dental depot and look like a train building, you know, a train station. So I understand the purview in that regard.
Well, I mean, so I think, where are we? That's the more important point. Where are we? Are we ready to make a motion to approve? I know, we know that there are some who are opposed, I think we just need to know where we are.
Can we add a TE that says no two-car garages?
That is important, that's an important deal to me because you show all the pretty pictures that have the one-car garages, but there's nothing in here that says you can do, can't do, the two-car garages, and it just becomes-
On the 30-foot lots?
Yes.
Yeah, there needs to be a caveat on that, that if we have a lot that is in excess of 30 feet, that doesn't apply because we have 40s and we have 50s.
Yep.
And we don't want those people to be hamstrung.
Absolutely. I'll agree to that.
I'll just note, that would have been a nice requirement for the last PUD that had the same issue that did not get caught, but we'll agree to that.
I see David's walking out now. He's leaving while he can.
Just in terms of equity and fairness, when you review these, it'd be helpful if everyone is being treated equally.
The same. That's a very good point, too.
I know I'm new here, but I would assume that for the majority of the horseshoe, the 30-foot's a new product, and this is kind of a new issue, and this is, you know, territory we're kind of all learning. Am I wrong?
Yeah, I agree, agree. And also, I wouldn't want to say that as a flat-out statement everywhere either, because oftentimes you could do 25-foot or 30-foot lots with alley access, and you do have a two-car garage back there, but you still have a home that faces the neighborhood-
Right.
-that has frontage and looks out the street. It's more, you know-
I still want to go on record to my other commissioners and state that there's going to be some heartburn driving down 15th Street with as long of a run as that is years from now and seeing the dilapidated fence, because I don't believe Oklahoma City does a good enough job on its subdivision basic requirements on arterial streets to have permanent fencing.
And I'll note that condition is the exact same whether these are 30-foot wide lots or 50-foot wide lots.
Yeah, code enforcement, code enforcement's an issue regardless of the lot size.
Right. I agree with that.
I think to Mark's point, I mean, we have not, we didn't explicitly ban two-car garages before. Is there a compelling reason for this? Is it that we should? Is there something different about this? Is it that because it's more 30-foot lots?
Well, the last case limited the number of 30-foot lots to 200. We're dealing with more lots here. I mean, it's just one distinct-
Are we dealing with more 30-foot lots? Because then what are we talking about?
331, or 311.
It's 311 over the 56 acres. I don't know what their acres were, but again, I think if you look at it holistically, half of our development was 50-foot lots and greater. This is a portion of it. This isn't being viewed as an entirely separate development. But again, we're not-
And it is interconnected physically, too.
Yeah.
Right.
In multiple ways. We're agreeable to the one-car garage and the 30-foot lot, but anything larger, there's no cap.
I agree with that. I'm saying the two-car garage is a 16-foot door, industry standard, and if it's a 30-foot lot, that doesn't, that doesn't give you anywhere for a front door. It's a 19-6 wide frame. So I would, I think that's a good, I think that's a good fair agreement, because we do have, different than the other one that was heard before, we have 65 of these lined up. They all are 30-foot.
Which is consistent with the exhibit that we were shown in this particular case as well, that we weren't shown in the last case.
So I think, so I think we're looking for a motion then. Commissioner Meek, with the T.
All right. I will move to approve PUD 19, move to recommend approval of PUD 1974 with the existing TE number one and adding TE number two, that on 30-foot lots, they're-
Shall be limited to one garage door.
Limited to one-car garage doors.
Correct. Commissioner Meek has moved to recommend approval to City Council of PUD 1974, subject to the additional technical evaluation as read into the record. That motion's been seconded by Commissioner Goveen. Please cast your votes. And the motion passes. I do think this is a good opportunity, Mark, to plug our ability as planning commissioners to receive a discount to be members of ULI, because I do think we would benefit from getting to see a variety of different housing types for ourselves, to have a better visual. I think it's hard, especially when we don't do this full-time. I mean, we aren't, I'm not a developer, but getting more exposure to different ideas and getting to see how it works and how it looks, I think, would benefit the commission. And I think this conversation would benefit from that, so.
I'll plug ULI then. As I'm the chair for mission advancement, the city has a membership. Anyone who serves on a border committee is eligible for a, I think it's $125 yearly membership. They have local events, and then we go to other cities to see what they're doing right and what they're doing wrong. And then anyone who's interested, more than happy to take anyone through the product that's going up now if they want to or if they're interested. Thank you.
I think it's worthy. I signed up to be a member of ULI, and I think it's a good idea for those of you who are able. We're in line for item 30. Oh, deferred. Sorry. I'm a member too. Oh, item 31, excuse me.
Okay, item 31 is a conference of plan amendment located at east of North Sarah Road and south of South Hefner Road.
Van Eri Moji Cortis for the Planning Department. We have here the CPA 2023-6, like Jeff mentioned, is located in North Sarah Road, south of West Hefner. The request is to remove the urban future layer. The original request was for 19 acres, approximately 19 acres is like the pink area, but the staff suggested to expand the area to cover the almost 160 acres. The associate application is PUD 1972. So there is the subject site, so you have an idea where it's located at. Right now, the Luda is urban future, is surrounded by some rural medium and some urban low. The land use is undeveloped right now. It's zone AA. The site is served by city water. The applicant is proposing to bring sanitary sewer. Sanitary sewer is close enough to be able to bring the sanitary sewer to the site. Is within the urban response time for emergency services too. So that's why the staff is recommending to approve the CPA. I don't know if there's any questions.
Any questions, Commissioners?
I don't think I saw anything in there on fire response time. Is that within the norm? Fire response time, I-
It's an urban response time. It's within, it's in our green zone. So it meets the urban-
Meets the requirements.
Yeah. It's actually surrounded by urban low, like on the north and in the south. It has water, sewer services. That's why the staff suggested to expand the area and just remove the urban future layer from the whole 100, almost 60 acres.
Excellent. If there are no other questions, I think we're ready for a motion. No one has signed up to speak for the comp plan.
Based on the staff's recommendations, I'll move for approval of the comprehensive plan change.
Unless the applicant has something to add, it sounds like you're going to get your way.
I was going to say, wonderful job, and we agree.
Okay, great. Commissioner Claire moves to approve of the proposed map amendment to the comprehensive plan. That motion's been seconded by Commissioner Noble. Please cast your votes. And the motion passes. We're in line for item 32.
Item 32 is PUD 1972, application to rezone 10400 North Sarah Road from AA to PUD 1972.
Once again, David Box, 522 Call Core Drive. This is the PUD that was associated with the comp plan change. It is an R1 PUD. There's no plat associated. We will have to come back. There is one TE, and we do agree to it.
This is in Ward 1. Commissioner Claire?
No questions for me. Anyone else have any? Anyone signed up to speak?
No one has signed up to speak, right on 32.
I'll move to approve, recommend approval of PUD 1972, subject to the technical evaluations.
Commissioner Claire moves to recommend approval to City Council of PUD 1972. The motion's been seconded by Commissioner Meek. Please cast your votes.
Thank you.
And the motion passes. We're in line for item 33.
Item 33 is PUD 1958, application to rezone 7612 Southwest 74th Street from AA.
Good afternoon. Caitlin Turner, 522 Call Core Drive, here on behalf of the applicant. You all have an exhibit that's being passed around that shows some of the concessions made on this application. So this application is to allow for a parking lot that will consist of cars, semi-trucks, trailers, accessory equipment, and RVs. This should look familiar. It came before you at the end of July. We have since had a couple neighborhood meetings and have made various changes to the master design statement. I first want to point out the nature and the uses and the zoning of the surrounding area. Is there a case map that we can, or a zoning map? Excuse me, there we go. So if you can see here, along South Council Road on the west side, there is plenty of I-2-zoned outdoor storage lots, gravel lots. The southeast corner of 74th and South Council Road was a SPOD that we recently got approved for, with an industrial's base zoning. On the north, to the north of Southwest 74th and to the east, you're going to see over 100 acres of I-2 zone property. PUD 404 to the east is also I-1 and I-2 base zoning. So in terms of compatibility with surrounding area, we would argue that this is compatible with the surrounding area, as this is a car lot, which we are implementing multiple safeguards, which I will discuss here shortly. Staff recommended approval the first time it came before you because it is compatible with the surrounding area and it does conform to the comprehensive plan. You can see in the staff report again now that staff recommends approval because it is compatible with the surrounding area and it conforms to the comprehensive plan. We've had, again, two neighborhood meetings, and since the previous planning commission hearing, we have made multiple concessions. The first, at a significant expense to the applicant, is to require 24/7 onsite security. There will always be a person there 24 hours a day, seven days a week, to monitor and ensure. The second concession, which is to prohibit idling hazardous material or livestock on the subject property. We have stipulated that all lighting shall be oriented away from residential zoned or utilized property. We're requiring eight-foot-high screening along Southwest 74th Street. We are also requiring a 100-foot setback from Southwest 74th Street to the access gate to gain entry onto the lot. We're requiring a minimum of 60 feet of pavement from the right-of-way. We're requiring a curb ribbon around the perimeter of the parking lot. The only other concession outstanding was to pave the entire lot. We see some benefit to going in and proceeding with the asphalt millings. One, we are going to be curbing the entire perimeter to keep everything intact. Two, from a drainage standpoint, we would see, or we would state that having the asphalt millings with that minimal permeability would actually help mitigate any drainage concerns. And we also have Mr. Lodge here that can help and assist answering any questions or concerns you all have regarding asphalt millings. So with that being said, I'm happy to answer any questions, and we would ask that you recommend approval on this item.
Thank you. And this is in Ward 3. Go ahead, Dustin.
This is Sierra's Utilities Department. I just, we saw one previous to this that did not have fire suppression or anything. This does not have access to water, and it does not say that they were going to extend. I know last planning commission meeting when this brought forth, they said that they were going to extend, but I would just like to see a TE added to say that fire coverage is required for, or a fire tank is required, or a water line extension is required for coverage.
Caitlin?
Yes, we will be extending water for fire suppression, and I thought that made it in the most recent draft of the master design statement. See here, yeah, water facilities are not currently available at this location. Water will be extended and provided from public mains. So that has made it into the master design statement, and we agree to that.
Okay. To be clear, what is the screening? I know you mentioned the screening on the frontage of 74th. Is there any other screening?
The entire property will be screened, just we're agreeing to the eight-foot on the frontage.
On that side in particular.
Yes, correct.
Just wanted to be clear.
But the entire boundary will be screened.
Okay. This is in Ward 3, and we do have a number of people signed up to speak. Commissioner Meek, you want me to call on them? You want to say anything? Excellent. First person we have ready to sign, signed up to speak is Roy Wolf. And please give us your name and address for the record, and you have five minutes to address the commission.
My name is Roy Wolf. I'm at 7529 Southwest 74th Street, which is just right across the street, a little bit to the east of the property they're wanting to develop. Some of the concerns we, the neighbors have, is where or if there will be a guard building. We have been notified that the applicants have agreed to 24-hour security, but there isn't any specifications as to if this onsite 24-hour security is a person in a car with a flashing light on top or an actual building staff 24 hours a day. In Section 8.1 of this PUD, it specifies that there will be no idling of vehicles onsite. If it's a guard in a car, but what and how will that guard survive in the summer with no air conditioning and in the winter with no heat, not being able to run their vehicle? Where is this 24-hour-a-day, seven-day-a-week guard going to use the restroom? If they have to leave the site, then we don't have 24-hour security. Another concern we, as neighbors, have is the need for the hard-surface paving. We believe this will help contain any spills and protect our groundwater from leaking diesel fuel, antifreeze, hydraulic fluid, or dripping sewage tanks from RVs. The types of fluids that will leak is only limited to the 178 spots that are, that something can be parked on. Painted lines on cement or asphalt with neatly numbered spaces certainly looks more pleasing to the eye than 178 six-foot by two-foot by two-foot cement barrier blocks that are used to divert traffic during highway construction with numbers spray painted on them placed throughout the 26 acres. This is just the beginning of what is going to become a giant eyesore that we will have the pleasure to view for years to come. The most concerning of all the neighbors is the actual placement of this parking lot. I did an internet search for 24-hour truck and RV parking in Oklahoma City and found four parking lots that were close to the amount of parking spaces proposed here. There are two things that all four of these lots had in common. The first one is that they are all located in commercial developments. The second, and probably the most concerning, is that of all four of the parking lots, there is not a single home within a quarter mile of the entrance. The neighbors to these parking lots consisted of a landfill, a recycling center, a heavy truck sales center, a wrecker service, a truck stop, a trailer repair center, and an interstate highway. Within a quarter of a mile of the entrance to this proposed parking lot, there are 10 homes with the Oklahoma County Assessor's values ranging from 900- homes with the Oklahoma County Assessor's values ranging from $983,500 to $236,500. There is no commercial property within a quarter mile of the entrance. I know there's commercial property, but it's not within a quarter mile of the entrance in either direction of the entrance to this lot. This development just doesn't fit. Please consider this when casting your vote, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Wolf. Next, we have Todd McClure, who I tried to call on earlier, so I'm glad that I figured out it was the wrong item. Please give us your name and address for the record. You have five minutes to address the commission.
Yes, my name is Todd McClure. I live at 7721 Southwest 74th Street, which is pretty much across the street. My main concern is safety, for one. This particular property is on the south side of the Southwest 74th. Between Council and Rockwell, it is a no-passing-zone street. It's double yellow stripes all the way down. If there are any trucks that are waiting to get in that are actually going eastbound, there is a hill that is just shortly past that, and cars that are going westbound would be coming over that hill if there were cars that would pass. Inevitably, if there are semi-trailers waiting to get in and somebody's behind them, they're gonna pass, even though it is a no-passing street. So there's a safety concern because there is a hill just east of the entrance to that property, and there is a lot of traffic in the morning. It's actually FAA traffic because it's going, they're going to the Monrody Center. There's a lot of morning traffic in the morning, and then there's a lot of evening traffic, or actually 3:00, 4:00 o'clock when they get out of FAA coming, going west. So it's a no-passing street, and it's a two-lane street, and if you're gonna have trucks, you know, I know they were gonna set back 100 foot, but if you, that may just allow one truck, or if there's more trucks waiting to get in, it's gonna be a traffic nightmare, basically. And then you're gonna have cars that are potentially coming, going westbound, that are coming over a hill, and there's gonna be cars that try to pass those trucks because they're not gonna sit there and wait forever. So it's a traffic concern. It's actually a residential area. There is no industrial-built property between Council and Rockwell. So it's just mainly a safety concern, and that's about it.
Thank you, Mr. McClure. And I believe that the next ones are signed up for item 36, but let me double-check. Would you like to address those issues? You might start at the concern about how you'll support and protect the person who will be the 24-hour security.
Right, so there will be someone there at all times. In terms of how that will operate, if they are in their car or a shack, I don't know how relevant that is due to the fact that there will always be somebody there to monitor the lot. You see universities and other heavy uses where there's the security person in the car. There's also security shacks on other lots. Regardless, there will be onsite security 24/7. And that is actually one of the concessions that we agreed to that we would need to add as a TE. The applicant originally contracted ProVigil to get cameras and figure out where all those would need to be to ensure that the entire lot would be surveilled. Since we're doing, that's the exhibit there. So since we're doing the 24/7 onsite security rather than the camera monitoring system, we would want to modify, it's Section 9.18, to switch those out. In terms of, you know, traffic on 74th from the semis, one, we are, we do have that 100-foot setback from 74th Street. Two, in the exhibit that you all can see, we have the semi turnaround. We don't anticipate this to be a heavy traffic use. So in terms of semis or heavy vehicles lining up, that is not anticipated. That's not what's seen really on other lots in this area. It's gonna be more so people come off Highway 152 or the John Kilpatrick, park their semi and go home for the night. So that's really the intent of this lot. Let's see. Is there something else that I would need to address? I apologize, it was.
You might address the surface again, and maybe we should have Barry talk about the surface as well.
Yeah, I think that having Mr. Lodge come address the asphalt milling would be helpful.
I thought that we had discussed previously that there would be a D cell on Southwest 74th. Did I dream that?
We did not discuss that, but if the city requires something like that, then we would agree to it. But no, we did not address a D cell for this one.
I've got one more that you might wanna address also is Barry and Caitlin. It talks about should this application be approved, the 17-foot of additional easement should be requested along 74th to bring the right-of-way width into standard. Is that drawn into the drawing?
No, that was, that's not even really a TE. That was something that was added to the staff report, but we don't have any issue with that.
Okay.
Barry Lodge, Public Works. I'll start off and say the applicant is proposing to use the asphalt millings as their surfacing for this. So I guess my statement in relation to that, I'm not an expert on asphalt millings, but I did consult our paving engineer before I came over here today to get some ideas about where they have used this. They primarily used it as a base course, basically an aggregate base for an asphalt overlay. That's gonna be in a, more of a public-street type of application. They did say that in using it in this type of an application, that it would be suitable, that it's not going to be the same quality of a surface as an asphalt pavement or a concrete pavement, but if it's placed properly, compacted properly, then it is going to be, and this is my term that I kinda threw out to them, is it is a semi-permanent pavement. It's not going to deteriorate significantly. There will be, if, again, if it's not, if it's not placed properly and constructed properly, there's gonna be a real potential for rutting of the pavement from the trucks. So there'll be some maintenance that will have to take place on it from time to time, which can be done with a grader. That's one advantage, excuse me, to that type of material, that they can go in and blade it and come back and recompact it, and again, it kinda gets back into its original condition. But a lot of that will go back into the thickness of the section that's put in it, and I'll throw out this. While we can't require a certain thickness on the pavement because it's gonna be a private parking lot, privately maintained, and I did express this to Caitlin as well, what my paving engineer said is they would, that they are typically looking at this as about a 10-inch-thick section, that that's gonna be something that will hold up under the truckloads. If you get thinner than that, then the maintenance, periodic maintenance is gonna go up on that. But it does form a fairly impervious layer. So if somebody spills 10,000 gallons of diesel fuel, yeah, we're gonna have a problem. We're gonna have a problem with that if it was on concrete pavement. If it's dripping oil from a truck that's been parked, typically not going to penetrate that surfacing layer. Again, that's information that's coming from paving engineer that has been working on a lot of this stuff.
I understand quite what you said, that we can't require them to. It's like, we're giving them the ability to do this. We have standards. Why can't we require them to?
It's.
They're all private parking lots, aren't they?
Yeah, they are, and because of that, we, and again, it kinda goes to our discussion on, that we've had several times, on private streets versus private driveways, where if it's, you know, the private street, we do require that to be built to a certain city standard. But if it is just a private driveway, then the engineer that's designing that project can design that typical section for that pavement. We don't tell them that it has to be built to a certain standard.
Impervious or no, we don't tell them it has to be developed to a certain standard.
Right.
I'm astonished to learn this after 17 years.
And I will add, if it makes the commission more comfortable, we're happy to concede to that 10-inch asphalt millings that Mr. Lodge addressed to kind of protect the lot and prevent some of that permeability. And that's something we can incorporate in the master design statement, making it.
Right. I kinda wanted to say something, and Mr. Lodge, please correct me if I'm wrong, or anyone else. It's better to have these materials absorb than it is to put them on the surface where they just wash further down the road and are more concentrated and still have to get absorbed somewhere. So we're not changing the nature, the problem of any oil dripping. It's better to keep it spread out over a larger area in small amounts than it is to put it on hard surface where it all has to wash somewhere and be more of a problem in my mind. I don't know for who that problem is, but.
I'm gonna jump in and say that, you know, I went to the neighborhood meeting, I've dealt with these nice people. They've been very patient. I apologize that you guys were at the very end of today. I wish you were at the first. I've done a lot of research. My next-door neighbor to my, our family business is Silver Star Construction, one of the largest pavers in the state. I had a meeting with them regarding this. A lot of this comes down to the developer, to the applicant and how they lay this down, whether it's hot rolled, whether it's got oil mixed in with it, whether they use a roller or a grader, or grader then roller, whether it's summertime, whether it's wintertime. There's so many different deals, but I will agree with you, with Mr. Lodge and several others that I've spoke with, that if this was my next-door neighbor or across from my house, that I would be leaning more towards the permeable asphalt millings instead of picking up in a, you know, when it doesn't rain for 45 days, and then all of a sudden we get a one-inch rain, and it picks all this grime and all this oil and whatever else has landed on the hard surface and brings it to the bar ditches and to the ponds and to the runoffs and directs it to other homes. I'm gonna, I'm not ashamed to say that I also think that this isn't as permanent of a development with the hard surface not being included. And as a neighbor, I would hope without the, you know, half a million or 700,000 or something like that hard-surface paving requirement, that it may go away someday and/or morph into something different that would be more acceptable. I believe the applicants have made great strides in the ribbon, the fencing height, the camera systems are gone in lieu of 24-hour security.
Correct.
I wish a little bit more detail on that would have been hashed out, and, but as a neighbor, I would, I would wanna know that there's someone there, that if there's a reefer truck running all night long on a freezer box, that there's somebody I can go talk to that knows how to look up a Rolodex and find a renter's phone number to get them back out there and shut it off. And I hope you guys do that and check them on that. Whether or not they have a facility to have an office and/or they want to pay the extra cost for 24-hour security that is based out of vehicles, that does cost more than hiring four or five employees and putting a mobile mini that has utility hookups. They've already agreed to bring in suppression protection, which means that it's as simple as purchasing a water meter to have domestic water. So they're halfway there to having a portable or fixed facility. The next issue would be sewer. I believe it'd be, you'd be money ahead to go ahead and bring sewer in and not have to pay roaming, you know, car-based security companies, but I'm at the point where I'm willing to leave that to the applicant. I believe that, I believe that the asphalt millings, I've morphed into agreeing with that instead of hard surface after I've spoke to the professionals and the engineers and the Silver Star people and stuff like that.
Could someone state with clarity? Because the way I heard the concern from Mr. Wolf, I think, was more about the environmental and water impact, drinking water impact if you use well water. Don't let me put words in his mouth, but that's what I'm hearing, and to me, we're not addressing that head-on. Like, how does it impact that?
Again, I will say that, you know, my whole area of expertise is not groundwater hydrology. However, just looking at how permeable the asphalt millings would be, I think, I think there probably is more potential for surface pollution from rainwater runoff, and we're gonna have that from any parking lot that's built anywhere than we would contaminating a drinking well water that should be 180, 200 feet deep. I'm not sure what, you know, they're gonna vary. Again, that's, that is my opinion on that. I don't think we're going to see the oil that would drip from a truck go through the asphalt millings any more than we would if we had an asphalt pavement.
My researches came back at approximately 20-foot wind well, and we spoke about that, Caitlin, and you spoke with another engineer regarding that, that the ground-surface contaminants in a, after a rain event typically stay in the top 20 feet. All of that, of course, depending on the type of preparation and installation of this, of this, of this, of the screenings. But regardless, I don't believe it gets down to the level of the, I mean, there was one lady that I think has three wells across the street that, specifically that case we looked at, and I don't believe it'd get anywhere, anywhere near your wells. It'd be a 20-foot-depth containment. Where the worry was, is when it all washed off in a rain event. That's where it could get and become a problem depending on its direction of flow and how they grade this and the grading plan and all of it. Instead of it diluting in its spots, it's all gonna, it's all gonna come together and it's gonna have higher contamination ratio.
And I'll also mention briefly, yes, it does stay pretty attenuated in the top soil. According to Oklahoma Water Resources Board, the nearest well is approximately 400 feet away from where this parking lot would start, and it's 200 feet deep. So we'll, of course, be meeting, you know, all state DEQ regulations, but I feel like that is just an additional, you know, fact that can help alleviate some of that concern.
Caitlin, why don't we, why don't we go ahead and hear where we are on TEs one more time?
Yeah, so we only have one TE, and we are more than happy to agree to it. So we would be adding the TE to revise Section 9.18, essentially to eliminate that paragraph as is and eliminating Exhibit D, which was subsequent to that section, and just instead state that onsite security shall be required 24 hours per day, seven days per week.
And then the change about the millings, I, you know, I can't follow that as well as, yeah. Barry?
The 10 inches.
10 inches? Yeah, if we have that thickness in there, I think that would be specified as a minimum, the 10-inch thickness.
So let's see, maybe under parking regulations, Section 9.9, to require inch, and inches of asphalt millings.
Okay. So two TEs at this point.
Right, and I don't have the, we don't have the master design statement. She's referring to the 9.9. We have the staff report. So I've got three TEs. 9.9 right here. Oh, that one.
You've got three? Oh, yeah, the one that's existing.
One that's existing.
There's one that's existing. So I've got the existing number one about the two new drives. Number two, revise 9.18 Exhibit D to say onsite security will be 24/7. And number three, 10-inch minimum asphalt screenings. And number three, 10-inch minimum asphalt screenings.
Okay.
Sound about right?
Yep, that sounds right.
Yes, correct.
Where are we, commissioners?
I'm not a fan of these cases.
Go ahead, Commissioner Goveen.
I, I mean, we've, we've addressed a number of things, but what we, we haven't addressed the, just the use. Is it an appropriate use in this location? You know, it's fairly close to the highway, but not as close as I wish it was, but that's what I'm struggling with.
I've had that all along. Just the road width in front of it is concerning. And, you know, that's been my, my number one biggest surprise of being a planning commissioner since June is that I understand the city's reactive. They can't and won't build the streets new and bigger and wider and, and do decel acceleration lanes until they know what, you know, developments come along that need them. Putting in 311 homes that are 30-foot wide, stuff like that, you know. It, it doesn't come and, it doesn't happen until this stuff's already in. But this is concerning. Semis coming in and out of this place on this little road. And I drove it today and it, these roads out there are, even when I, you know, I drove this road when I went to another neighborhood meeting and it was raining and it was at nighttime. When I got out of this neighborhood meeting at Mustang, over the Mustang Crossing deal, and I came down this road and the hill that that gentleman spoke about is concerning. And just my, my, you know, my past as a firefighter, there's gonna be fire trucks there dealing with issues, period, and accidents. Semis can't get out fast enough.
Well, I'll note, we are increasing the right-of-way if this were to be recommended for approval. So, that would help mitigate that a little bit. Again, we have the 100-foot setback. We're providing for the semi turnaround to try to mitigate any effect there. And then if we pull up the zoning map again in terms of compatibility, I mean, we're surrounded by industrial uses, I-2, modern industrial uses. And that's, you know, we're buffered on both sides by other parcels of land that are not a part of this application. We believe that this is absolutely compatible, but we are adding in multiple safeguards to make this even farther away from any kind of residential.
Right. Caitlin, sorry, I want to jump in. I appreciate you blowing up the drawing. That's what I asked for and you brought it and passed it out. And it, and it's, it's, it's helping me and it's gonna help everybody, I believe. If you look at the blown-up enlarged site plan, the semis, they come in to the, yeah.
The northern entry.
Yeah. So, they come in that direction. When they come out, if they're turning left coming out, they have that turnaround that doubles that width there. It's the semis that go the other direction. If they come out turning right, that's an issue. They're gonna cross the center line. And my question is, and maybe Mr. Lodge can help me, there is city maximum allowed radiuses that they, they allow. But in a case like this, if, if, if this goes through and gets approved, it would be great to be able to have like a 25 or 30-foot radius on that. I can't read, even with the blown-up version, I can't read what this radius is. Okay. Hang on, we got a trick.
Go ahead, Barry.
Commissioner Meek, I will address kind of your, your, your issue on the radius. So, we do have a, for, for a commercial entrance, we, we have a, what we look at as a minimum. But what I, what I'll typically look at when we're looking at approving the driveways, if we'll have the engineer provide truck turning radius template on their site plan, we'll, we will approve a larger return radius coming into that driveway as well as a, a wider driveway if that's going to improve the safety and, and if it's shown necessary. And, and so that's something that we can consider. We wouldn't be held, they may have a, a dimension on their schematic site plan that might have a 25-foot radius on that. But if, if it's necessary to get, help get the trucks off of the roadway quicker, we'll go with a, a larger radius and, and we can get a, a wider driveway to help with that traffic movement as well.
Okay. I will tell you, thanks to Commissioner Privet's hack here. They are 25-foot on both sides, which are, those are big. That's a big radius. I mean, when you're looking at neighborhood entries, driveway entries at five and neighborhood entries at 10, and so we're at 25 on, on a semi radius. So, I just wanted to make sure with that double exit that they didn't, because I've turned in a building permit before where they said from rate, from end of radius to end of radius exceeds 30 or 35 feet and it's not allowed. I'd like that to not happen to this case.
So, the, the actual rule on that is that what, what we're typically looking at, if the driveway width exceeds 30 feet and if we go past that and, and it's a 15 to 20 or 25-foot radius on the, on the curb returns, it requires approval of the city engineer or a public works director.
Okay.
So, we, we have some latitude in that. So, it, it's not a hard, fast rule, but it's a, it's a guideline that keeps us from running into 50 and 60-foot wide driveways with 50-foot radiuses on the, on the, the returns. But we do have the latitude to approve wider driveways and larger radius on that return. And, and I just look for the turning templates to justify that.
Right. Because according to this one, it'd be 25, 25, 16, and 21. So, yeah, they, they would've ran into that right away.
Yeah.
Okay.
Where are we, commissioners?
You know, I, I would really like to reward the applicant in this instance for the effort that they have put into this, that they have been willing and have in fact negotiated, you know, any number of very specific concerns and details to try to ameliorate the impact of this use. I have to acknowledge the fact that there are industrial uses nearby. And yet still, like Commissioner Goveen, what I keep stubbing my toe on is just the use. Whether this particular piece of property is appropriate for this use. And even though it says on the front page of our staff report that the application is to allow parking for semi-trailers, and that probably is, sounds like the worst of it, so that's, I'm not trying to say they're sugarcoating it. But in fact, it is, it is automotive and equipment storage, an outdoor parking lot for cars, semis, trailers, accessory equipment, and RVs. And I just know that every single one of these I have ever seen was not something that I would find compatible across the street from residential usage. So, I don't think I'm gonna be able to get there strictly on the use.
We do have the onsite security to hopefully monitor and mitigate anything from being left, but again, 100-foot setback, 8-foot screening along 74th. There are plenty of lots like this along council, gravel lots. We're near the highway. It's something that I feel like keeps coming before this commission. I feel like the reason for that is because lots like this are needed in Oklahoma City, especially near highway. So, I understand, but hopefully that helps.
Other thoughts, commissioners?
We're just going round and round on this, I feel like. There is some pockets of I-2, but it's, it's an AA zone land and it's sandwiched between two other AA zone parcels. That's the, that's the, that's what's really, and it's across the street from residential homes that have showed up to make their voices heard. And that, that's what's really, I, I don't think I can, I, I can't get there for that reason.
If there aren't any new thoughts to share, then it sounds like we just need to go ahead and have a motion here and see where we are in terms of the vote. So, I don't know, Commissioner Meek, you want to go first?
Bear with me one second. All right. I, Chairman, Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna move to recommend for approval, PUD 1958 with three TEs. One is existing. Number two, revising 9.18 Exhibit D2 saying that onsite security will be provided 24/7, 365. Number three, that there will be 10-inch minimum asphalt screenings.
So, the motion is to recommend approval of PUD 1958 to city council, subject to the additional technical evaluations as added to the record. That motion was made by Commissioner Meek. I think we just need to, there we go. Get it going on the system. And then is there a second? If there is no second, then we need a different motion. Is there a second? There is no second. So, we, the motion is defeated. We need another motion. Commissioners?
Yeah.
Sounds like we need a motion for denial from someone.
I'm gonna move to recommend denial of PUD 1958.
Commissioner Meek moves to recommend denial of PUD 1958 to city council. That motion's been seconded by Commissioner Goveen. To be clear to both the audience and to our commissioners who are casting votes, when you vote yes, you are voting to say you want the, the city council to understand that we are, we don't want them to approve of this. Yes, please.
Seconding a motion to deny, but it actually, the previous system had not cleared. So, it, it registered as a, as a second to the motion to approve.
Okay, I think it's corrected now. So, now who wants to second, is someone going to second the motion to recommend denial? Okay, before I call for the vote, two things to clarify. Number one, if you are casting a vote of yes, you are encouraging the city council to say, to deny this application, to not allow this rezon. Okay? Double, the, the reverse negative. The other thing for our neighbors to very clearly understand, if we vote, whether we vote to say we approve of this application or, or we vote to say we want to deny this application, it still goes to city council in six weeks and they make the ultimate decision. So, regardless of our recommendation, you still need to go to city council in order to, to see what happens, because that's the final decision.
And I would highly recommend that you call your council person.
Okay. So, let's, please cast your votes. And the motion to recommend denial passes. We are now in line for item 34.
This is S.P.U.D. 1569, application to rezon 7116 Memorial Parkway from PUD 198 to S.P.U.D. 1569.
Good afternoon, David Box, 522 Call Core Drive. On behalf of the applicant, the application before you is for a doggy daycare. Chair, would you go to the aerial? So, you know, I, I've done a ton of doggy daycares and no one's ever said a word about them until it was in the middle of downtown next to the bus station.
Then we heard a lot about it.
We, we did. And to my knowledge, you're not gonna hear anyone but me.
But now you're the doggy daycare guy.
I'm the doggy daycare guy. I've been known as worse things. So, when you look at this specific property, it's tucked back in the back of a kind of a commercial development. What is not shown there, but is there in reality now, the hard corner at Memorial and Rockwell is a Chick-fil-A. So, what this specific tract is bordered by is on the south, a parking lot, on the southeast, an electrical substation, and to the west, the Farmers Insurance Building. It is worth noting that the first piece of building you see is their data processing center. So, there are no people that, that work in that. To the actual office portion of the building, I believe it's over 300 feet from where any dogs would be. We do require a seven-foot tall fence around any outdoor play area. There was a request of us to remove the architectural metal and we can't agree to that. So, we agreed to TE1. We'd asked that you add a TE2 to remove the architectural metal language within the facade regulations.
All right.
Hold on. What does that mean, the material is permitted to be? Real quick, I'm just trying to get to the passage. So, when we've removed architectural metal, what have we left? So...
Brick veneer, it becomes your standard.
Rockstone masonry.
Brick veneer, rockstone masonry, stucco, cementitious siding. This becomes your standard. I say that. Architectural metal has become part of the standard, but we're happy to remove it here.
Yeah, I'm normally, that's why I'm, normally I'm fully in support of architectural metal, but I understand in this case and there's, other conversations have been had and I think that's appropriate to remove.
Right. I, I don't think the exhibits were architectural metal.
This is in Ward 8, Commissioner Noble.
I'm reviewing it. I, I would like to hear from the rest of the horseshoe what they thought about the location of a dog day, or a dog daycare in this location before we get too far.
Sounds like there's robots working there, so.
I think it's a good location.
I think one of the things that we heard on the last one was, you know, it was in an urban area, so you had sound bouncing off of, you know, taller buildings. You don't have that out here. So, I, to me, that's not a concern. I, I mean, I think it's, I think it's a good location. I see, see the, the employees of State Farm really enjoying, enjoying this as a benefit.
The bourbon dogs are quieter.
And you said no protesters, right?
Correct.
It's, I mean, it's next to a parking lot.
Yeah.
And a highway.
And an occupied building. So, I was, I was good with it, as someone who takes their dog to a daycare. And nothing's louder than a Chick-fil-A drive-through.
God's chicken.
That's what my wife says, at least my children within the car are as loud as it gets at the Chick-fil-A drive-through.
Those contain units.
So, the, the fence, the site-proof fencing, do you know what the material's gonna be?
I don't. I mean, I assume some form of wood product.
There's, in one of the exhibits, it calls out Trex fencing, which Trex is a composite material.
Yeah, fake fence, fake wood. And nobody was here to speak on it?
Nope. I think we're ready.
With that, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve, or to recommend approval of S.P.U.D. 1569.
Commissioner Noble moves to recommend approval to city council of S.P.U.D. 1569, subject to the one technical evaluation.
And the addition of no architectural metal.
Yep, that's it. Sorry. Thank you. See, that's why we got legal counsel up here. And an additional technical evaluation, removing architectural metal as the list, on the list of acceptable building materials. That motion's been seconded by Commissioner Meek. Please cast your votes.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're in line for item 35.
Item 35 is case S.P.U.D. 1570, application to rezon 1039 Northwest 63rd Street from C-3.
Good afternoon, David Box, 522 Call Core Drive. For one last time this afternoon, this is an application at the northeast corner of 63rd and Western. I think it's a very exciting application. Bank 7 is currently located in what is a kind of 80s, 90s-style strip center on a corner that is a very prominent corner and continues to get more prominent with all of the wonderful developments that are going on around that kind of 63rd and Western area. We have Washington Prime, who owns Nichols Hills Plaza, Classic Curve, that triangle. It's my understanding that the Canton Apartments are gonna be coming back online at some point. And so, what Bank 7 is desiring to do is to take that kind of old-school And so, what Bank 7 is desiring to do is to take that kind of old-school-style development and remove it, and come back with a very prominent building on the corner, more in the style that I think the city is encouraging, by bringing the building to the frontage of Western and 63rd Street. So, we're fairly far along in the design. You know, we're kind of showing you what, what we have here. Staff does recommend approval. There is, or there are five TEs, and we agree to TEs 1 through 4. So, TE5 asks for a 10-foot setback, and we cannot agree to that, but I have an exhibit that I think is going to ease any potential fears. So, we do have a 0-foot setback, but it really is only relevant to this architectural piece up top. We have a 10-foot setback for the first 20 vertical feet of the building along 63rd. I did talk to staff. The city does already maintain and possess the site triangle, so there's no issue there with traffic. The elevation you're looking at here is if you were standing in the middle of the intersection, looking northeast. So, you can see, we have sidewalks, and you can see that there is plenty of space between that sidewalk and the front face of building. So, perhaps we add a TE, or modify TE5, that the first 20 feet of vertical elevation along 63rd Street shall have a 10-foot setback. Above 20 feet, we'll go to a 0-foot setback. Happy to answer any questions.
This is in Ward 2, Commissioner Powers.
Okay, so, I think this is a great improvement for this corner, and frankly, for the bank. The building that they're in now is, let's say, lackluster and be kind. And I think, you know, this is lovely, the landscaping and, you know, all of that. I think, I think this is a great thing, I really do. We had a little bit of discussion about various things, but that all came out okay. I don't have any problem at all with the setbacks, and I think that's a good compromise, the first 20 feet. That's a great way to describe what's going on there. Where did we land on how many stories it is?
What's that?
Where did we land on how many stories?
So, we allow for 80 feet, which is, would allow for up to a five-story building, which is less than what C3 would allow, which is a six-story building. If you look at Chesapeake immediately across the street, it's five stories plus a fairly significant roof pitch. You can actually see it in the...
Reflected.
You can see this reflection off the glass. So, a lot of verticality at that intersection because of what Chesapeake has, so it's certainly compatible with, with that in C3.
And frankly, I think that the, that the corner, you know, can stand it, so...
Yeah.
The site slopes, as it moves to the east, and so... Is there anybody here who wants to be heard on this item?
No, ma'am.
Okay, then I'm going to move approval. Item number, oh, I'm sorry, did any of you have anything you wanted to say?
Does anybody else have any?
I didn't, I didn't see anybody about to speak.
It's all good. We've been here a while. Do you want to get that amendment in for TE5?
Absolutely. I'm going to move approval, item number 35, S.PUD 1570, with the amendment of TE number 5, to read that the first 20 feet of vertical elevation shall maintain a 10-foot setback.
Excellent. The Commissioner Powers moves to recommend approval to City Council of S.PUD 1570, subject to the technical evaluations as amended and read into the record. The motion's seconded by Commissioner Claire. Please cast your votes. And the motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're in line for item 36.
Item 36 is Case C7592, preliminary plat of Mustang Creek Estates, located north of southwest 29th Street and west of South Morgan Road.
Good afternoon. I am Kyle Miller, Rocket Engineering, 1000 West Neifon, Columbia, Missouri. Before you today, we are, and try to get a slide here real quick, if you don't mind. There we go. Okay, so, we are requesting today, before you, the preliminary plat for the Mustang Creek Estates. So, like I said, Kyle Miller, Rocket Engineering, with me today, I have Dan Sanders, Jason Maddox with Mako Development, Jeremy Maddox with Mako Construction, and Rebecca Schillak with Wallace Architects. So, just a brief overview of our project and what we have going on. We have a 20.23-acre tract that's currently zoned R1 and R3. What we're proposing today is a senior-only, restricted-age, developed 55-plus development. And on this 20.23-acre lot, what we will be doing is creating 12, 12 lots that will be using a quadplex usage, and in one, 16.25-acre common lot. Whenever we break that out with the 48 units as part of this, it comes to a 2.37 dwelling unit per acre. When looking at surrounding subdivisions around that area, it's actually less than most of the surrounding subdivisions that are close to that. So, a few items here that we want to point on is a plan OKC, comprehensive plan, land use, comprehensive plan policies, traffic, stormwater, and environmental policies. So, just as you guys seen here on the site overview, we have R1 to the north side of our lot, and R3 to the south, within the 12 lots spread out among that. Here's kind of more zoomed in of what we're proposing. You can see we have the 24-foot private driveway coming through there to each one of the lots, the 12 buildings themselves, and the quadplex use with the sidewalk to each of the units. Okay, so, highlighting a few things here with the land use and some other features. This is the low-intensity part of the typology area, and it fits right in with the plan and OKC map. All of it is within the same area, all the other features. R3 zoning district, which we will be conforming to, similar uses around it with R1, R4 to the north, we have PUDs all the way around it. Another item to highlight here is that with .65 acres is what is required for this plat, and actually, our common lot, and with the uses, we're actually giving 16.25 spaces of open space. A few items of the comprehensive plan that the city likes to see with all of their developments, continuous system of open space along the stream, 100-foot buffer from the stream, as well as preserving those natural trees, which we are doing. Utilizing the urban water and sewer systems as part of the system, all of that is already in place, it's there, would require small extensions to be able to utilize this development, as well as the connectivity with the sidewalk, especially with this being 55-plus senior usage. A few items to highlight from the traffic side of things. It's connecting to Morgan Road, major artillery, artillery, as well as, it's a senior development, so it's 55-plus. Part of that is that this is a maintained for a minimum of 30 years with a land agreement. So, that is what will be in place for 30 years, as well as, what that means is that it won't cause increased traffic over that extended period of time. Typically, what we see on these type of developments is that there are actually less vehicles than residents, with it being 55-plus, as well as, the residents don't really utilize those peak on-and-off times for traffic flows. Few items to highlight here with stormwater. We will be required, and we're planning to do all of the Oklahoma City municipal code, we will be avoiding the FEMA 100-year floodplain, as it is within proximity of the property, but we will be avoiding it to the most of extent, as well as installing detention basins for stormwater control. Lastly, here with environmental protections, of the 20.23-acre tract, we're actually only developing and disturbing 4.25 or close to that. And with that, half of that is going to be put back with grass and seeded around the buildings after it gets done. Maintain all the heavy wooded areas that is currently in place now. And there's been some concern with the noise, with this being a senior development, I don't think we're going to have that, seniors aren't too party-crazy-type folks, as well as, they usually, we find, keep their properties, they take pride in their properties and want to keep it well-kept. So, it would be a nice product at the end. So, just here in conclusion, you know, all of these utilities are at the site, it's close to, wouldn't be causing any major road, road problems or extensions, large extensions, let me phrase that. We see no objections from the fire, follow all the city code and the comprehensive plan, adhere to the city zoning. And so, it does come approved, with recommendation, with approval from your city staff today with, I believe it's seven TEs, and we would be willing to accept those at this time. So, any questions?
A couple, before I call on Commissioner Meek. One, let's clarify, we don't have the authority to mandate that this is a 55 and over facility. So, that is not within our purview to require that. But it is helpful, as we are trying to assess the compatibility, to know your intention. But there is no action that we can take today that can require that of the developer. The other question is, could you tell us about your conversations with the neighbors? Because we've got a couple of people signed up to speak. So, how did that go?
You bet. So, we have not, I personally have not had any conversations with the neighbors in regards to this project, but I know we have had conversations with the staff, had that pre-construction, pre-development meeting, have had the preliminary plat that's been submitted to the staff with comments that have been received.
Based on hearing that, I don't know how many, if you've seen how we've operated in the past, we generally would like for a conversation to have happened with neighbors before we make a recommendation. And that's going to be where I'm leaning at this current moment in time, given the number of letters we received, and we do have people here signed up to speak. But I'll defer to Commissioner Meek first.
I concur. Something like this would have been real easy to, to try to have a neighborhood meeting and avoid a protest and talk to the good people that live around this place. I'm going to jump right in and say, just because you have no comment from fire doesn't mean that they're going to allow a fire engine to drive all the way down to the dead end of the street that's there without a turnaround.
We do have an approved fire turnaround at the end of that street.
I didn't see it on the design.
Jared, if you wouldn't mind going back to this slide that kind of zooms in on the property, we can show that. Yeah, right there. So, kind of near the end of the lot, with that one unit that sticks out on the north side, that would be an approved fire turnaround right there.
Oh, that's, that's your Hammerhead T?
Correct.
Okay. As long as it meets the, the design requirements of...
Right.
Oklahoma City's Hammerhead T, then I would, I would say that would be sufficient. Sorry, I missed that.
No, no problem.
Yeah, I, I, we have people signed up, I'd like to hear what they have to say.
Probably hear from them.
Yeah, and...
One quick question.
Go ahead.
Just on the, it's quadplexes, so you're saying these are two down, two up? So, four units?
Be all, all single-story?
All single-story.
All right.
Okay, okay. It just looks like they're kind of laid out like...
There would be two, two units on the west side, two units on the east side.
Okay, okay, okay. I see it now.
Yeah.
Want to hear from neighbors first? First, we have Mr. Wallace, who I think is in your, with your group, right? Okay, let's go with Shannon Chambers. And please give us your name and address for the record. You have five minutes to address the commission, and thank you for your patience.
Thank you. My name is Shannon Chambers, and my address is 2809 Morgan Trace Road. I am coming today to represent the people of the communities surrounding Morgan and Mustang Creek. I'm speaking on behalf of the families and also the community members that live close by regarding Case C7592. We're opposed to the development primarily because of the flood zone. You'll notice on the map that the flood zone comes right up to where the retention ponds are, and according to the FEMA map, it shows that even though it's in a 100-year plain, the website itself says that a lot of those 100-year planes need to be reevaluated to be even a 25-year floodplain. So, we're concerned that as they make a larger concrete footprint in what is currently the area that is used to, for runoff, water runoff, then those neighborhoods are going to flood. And already, we've seen that in the metro. So, I am asking this committee to consider what they've already put in place for Oklahoma City, because Oklahoma City has adopted the natural and built environment initiatives, specifically NB10 through NB13, and it states the alterations to the 100-year floodplain are discouraged. It also says in the initiatives NB14 through 19, that removing some of those trees and green spaces can have a negative effect on the heat islands in our area. So, already, Oklahoma City has recognized that we're having problems in those spaces. And I just ask that the committee reconsider and vote no, and deny the development of that space due to the floodplain.
So, Ms. Chambers, just to be clear, let's say that the developer has, hears your concerns, and he gets with city staff, and the, all the hydraulic engineers, which we know, we've clarified Barry is not one, but, but, let's say he does that, and he comes back, and they present a plan that's approved by FEMA, that says that building this whole facility is going to prevent your area from being at risk of being flooded, because it's addressing it directly. How, would that change your analysis? Does that mean you'd be for us approving this development? If they can show that, that they're going to actually mitigate the drainage issues?
And that would alleviate some concerns. The other concern that I have is that you'll notice that the quadplexes are built right up against our fence lines. So, I would, I would also ask that possibly they build a large retention law, wall for privacy, and just in case there, there is additional flooding. And I think that that would help with some of the community concerns there as well.
Gotcha. Thank you so much. Kevin Chambers.
Thank you, Commissioners. Kevin Chambers, 2809 Morgan Trace. So, my concerns, along with the flooding, is also the traffic. You know, we've looked at, I leave at, you know, 7 o'clock every morning, and Morgan is packed, and adding, you know, 48 some odd cars to that, and I don't agree with what he said, that, you know, I'm in my 50s, I still go to work at 7:30 in the morning. So, if it's 55 and over, it's still going to have people working, I mean, people work until their 70s now, so I kind of disagree with that analysis that he came up with. I mean, we'd ask the traffic lawyer to go in at that corner, if they decide to do it, if you decide to approve this, because it will cause a lot more wrecks. There's already wrecks on Morgan Trace from what I've read. So, I haven't seen any firsthand, we've only been there a few months, so... The other part is, my concern is, we're putting quadplexes inside of a neighborhood where there's single-family homes. We have 3,000-square-foot houses in that area, we're going to put in, I don't know, 500,000-foot square homes there. I mean, I'm worried about the property value in our area, I'm afraid it's going to, you know, decrease that. So, these are some concerns we have. Let me just make sure I get all my time there. Also, we talked to the principal of the school, right there in the corner of Morgan and 29th Street. She has a lot of buses coming in and out, her parents coming out of traffic on 29th Street is, you know, pretty, pretty busy. So, that's the other part of the traffic issue we were talking about. And visiting with some of the people in the city, we, you know, discussed the traffic analysis, and they don't do traffic analysis until after the houses are built. I think we probably need to look at doing a traffic analysis in that area to make sure that we're not going to, you know, outdo that street, I guess, is what our wording is, but, so, that's all I have.
That's great, thank you.
Appreciate you guys.
I believe that's all. We have the applicant a chance to respond.
All right, thank you. Yes, so to address a couple of these comments, in regards to the floodplain, the flood zone, we have shown that on here, we have discussed that with staff, and like I previously mentioned, we are avoiding it to most all parts of this development. Even the detention basins are out of that 100-year floodplain. All of the buildings themselves will be raised per FEMA requirements, per the city's requirements above those floodplains, to, to the requirements that the city would require and be met. In regards to the buffering between the R1 and the, in the subdivision, that is R1 and R3, we would be applying all of the standard city code that would require the buffering. And then, in addition to the traffic, again, I'd like to reiterate, it's a senior development. School, there will not be additional burden to the schools, no children, would be typical, typical for the 55-plus development, as well as, again, the peak hours, you just don't see that with this, with those type of developments. Any other questions?
One, what do you think about taking two weeks? I guess it'd be a little bit more than two weeks, right? Because we're only meeting once. How do you feel about taking a continuance to meet with the neighbors, see what we can do to address their concerns, and coming back to our next meeting on December 14? How do you feel about that?
I guess we can. I, if there's major concerns, and I guess we, I would like to talk about them, but other than that, I mean, I guess we're open to the idea. than that, I mean, I guess we're open to the idea. But if there's certain concerns, I think we'd like to hear those first.
I agree with that. One, I do want to, I was asking the question about the drainage, your feelings, how they would change about the drainage for a very specific reason, and that is that the city, the law requires, as they're building this facility, whatever it is, however many homes, they can't make the drainage worse, and they have to demonstrate that. Also, they have to, it's thoroughly permitted and investigated by our Public Works Department. So, that is, that is a part of the analysis and review that they do. And I'm not doing it justice, but Barry can, I'm certain, talk through that. So, I do think it's important for you to understand that, that that's a critical part of the analysis that the city does down the road too, in the permitting process. It sounds like there are concerns about traffic. It also sounds like there's concerns about the level of privacy between the lots that would be adjacent to you and the development that you're creating. Are there other thoughts from Commissioners on this too?
I do have one more thing I'd like to add.
Please, sorry.
If you don't mind. Again, this is owned R3 with the use of what we're applying for.
That's important, too.
It is zoned for this use of the quadplexes. We're not coming in and asking for a variance to put in high-rise or student housing or anything in that. I mean, it is zoned for this exact application. So, I just want to make sure that is known. And I'm sorry, I did interrupt you. Go ahead.
No problem. Just a question, the proposed access is a private driveway, not a private road? Is that correct?
It'd be a private drive.
So, a private drive built to city standards? Let's see, I think it's 24-foot wide?
It would be 24-foot wide. It would not be required to be built to the exact city standards, is my understanding. Is that correct? Right.
Standard of a driveway, but not the standard of a city street?
Right.
I'm.
Any reason why you went with that?
So, with the city standard, you'd be required to have the right-of-way distance as well, and in this application, number one, it just doesn't fit what we are going for with that development of having the quadplexes because of getting the lots in there.
And the parking stalls?
Right, right, yeah, exactly.
Is it curbed?
It will be curbed and gutted, what's improved in storm throughout with, going to the detention basins, that's correct.
Other thoughts, Commissioners?
Well, I was just going to ask, I assume for cost reasons, if nothing else, that you're planning to leave the trees and so on in place that are there?
Yes, most, all trees will remain. If there's a few, that would be scattered with where the buildings themselves are going, but other than that, all trees, all stream buffer, all, even the buffers that are currently there, that is on the property line between the subdivision to the south as well as where we're at. I know we drove out there, and there's some large trees that are at the site there now. It would be our intention to leave all of that the way it is.
Okay.
You know, the other thing to remember, Commissioners, is, you know, in a typical, if this were a rezoning case, if they were in a hurry, we could say, well, you know, you've got six weeks between here and council, but there's a preliminary plat. We're the final decision-maker on both the preliminary and the final. So, that's what leads me to think, at least having the conversation, seeing what changes could be made, is still an important part of our process. Thoughts? Now, we would not be allowed to be a part of it because for a preliminary plat, we're a quasi-judicial, it's a quasi-judicial proceeding for a preliminary plat, so we could not join you, but, but I do think it would be beneficial. Thoughts? If other people think it's fine to go ahead, then voice that so we can decide.
Well, I can't, no, mic's working. I appreciate what people have said about the case and the concerns from the neighbors, but I'm really in support of the development. I mean, it's relatively small in scale, and I think is doing the right things. I was curious about the private drive, if that was a concern for fire access and stuff, but it sounds like that's been vetted, and that's all, that's all okay as it's laid out, so that's just where I am. I would vote if we were going to vote.
I like the development, but I would prefer that they talk to the neighbors.
Yeah, that's fair.
You know me, I'm never going to say no to a neighborhood meeting.
Yeah, I already knew where you were, I think. Other?
It was our kind of initial thought, not coming in asking for a lot of variances or something different, that it would be a little bit more, it's following all of the right code, and it's, you know, it's kind of more cut and dry, and that was our thought behind it. And so, I guess I'd like to get your opinion. If that's not the case, you know, what would we like to get out of the meeting? What would be the more, the idea that we would like to see?
Often, when you have these conversations, and once neighbors have an understand, a chance to ask their initial questions, because the natural response often, and I'm not accusing these neighbors of those, these feelings, but often, people are just afraid of change. And so, when they have the chance to like engage with you in meaningful dialogue about what your intentions are, and see more examples more clearly, and then voice some general concerns, there might be small tweaks that you could make that are really meaningful to them in terms of feeling more comfortable with this. And so, I think that opportunity is one I wouldn't want to pass up unless there's some other factor that we should know about that is a time constraint of some kind. It's my preference for you to just have that conversation and see what happens.
Come on up.
Yep.
We have done back-to-back preliminaries and finals on the same meeting, too, haven't we?
That's true.
We have done that.
And if that would help, since we've got a month, instead of just our usual.
We could do that.
I think if there's a time concern there, that that would be the way to deal with it.
I like that.
Do a back-to-back preliminary and finals, what they're talking about.
Okay. I'm Jason Maddox, I'm with Mako Development. I think, to echo what Kyle mentioned, I guess our thought process, and we do this a lot, and our thought process is, we weren't coming to ask to rezone, we were asking to build what's, what's able to be built there.
Mm-hmm. You're zoned to do this, for sure.
So, you know, we, there have been instances where we have done rezonings, we've had neighborhood meetings, and some of the concerns that the neighbors expressed, we try in every way that we can to make changes, modifications, and, you know, to the plans. You know, this is a very low-density senior proposal. It's not like it's three stories, trying to look in their backyard, you know, it's pretty much as least intrusive as possible. I think, just to answer your question as to why we didn't have that, that was our thought process, but we'll, we'll meet with the neighbors, listen to the feedback. We read all the concerns that they expressed, and that's why we were trying to, in our presentation, mention the traffic flow. You know, like I said, maybe 80% of the residents will own a vehicle, but only 15% of the residents are out on the streets at peak times. They're not dropping their children off at schools, not picking their children up at school, so they have very little impact on the peak traffic flow. So, those are the types of things, and, you know, we already talked about leaving all the trees, you know, we're only impacting four acres of the 20, so all of that stream buffer area is not going to be disturbed, so we were hoping that that would possibly ease their concern some, but we're willing to listen.
Well, I think the possibility of bringing both the preliminary and the final plat to the December meeting would be ideal, and I don't know the logistics behind what it takes to do that on the staff side. It might be that that's not possible, but I know we've voted that way numerous times.
Sarah Welch Planning, that, we've done that before, but I don't think they're ready for a final plat.
Okay.
They don't have one filed. So, the question would be whether or not, if you approve the preliminary and there are changes that are made through the neighborhood meetings, could those be reflected in the final plat?
I agree with that.
That is the question, and I don't know, logistically.
If they're not ready to have their final plat heard, then it's clearly not as much of a time crunch as it would otherwise be. They can't build until they've got their final plat, so.
And I do, I don't want to take anything away from the job that was done in terms of preparation of the presentation. I thought it was an excellent presentation of all of these issues. It's just important to us that neighbors actually be heard.
I didn't think this.
So, are we, I think we're at the place of, okay, we need a motion. Are you all in agreement with taking the continuance to December 14?
I think it would either be that or one of the other options is listen to some of the neighbors' comments and then work that into the final plat whenever that time comes.
The risk you run is that at that point, if we're not satisfied or don't feel like you've addressed the neighbors' concerns, we're just going to delay your final. So, as long as you understand that if we were to take this course of action, that's how we're going to respond if we're not satisfied by the level of engagement with the community at that point. So, are you, is that the risk you'd rather run? They're saying, they're saying they might want us to still do, approve the preliminary potentially, and then they could still make the changes, may incorporate any changes the neighbors wanted into the final, which is.
Gentlemen?
So, you all got to tell us, one way or the other. We can, we don't want to decide for you. If you'd rather us vote on the preliminary now, we can.
I thought the 311.
And I believe our next meeting is December 12, right?
12?
14.
14.
So, it's more than two weeks.
So, we could, we could vote on the preliminary today, but just know that we would expect you to incorporate changes that the neighbors, you know, after this conversation that occurs, we'd want those changes reflected in the final.
Right.
And if we're not satisfied that they were, then we'd just delay consideration of the final. So, we can vote today. I mean, if that's your preference, we can.
I'm sorry?
I said, if it's your preference that we vote today on the preliminary plat, we can. But, again, just understand that that just puts more pressure on the final.
Right, and I, you know, without knowing the demands that are going to be made, and, you know, what's going to satisfy you as far as our level of engagement with them, I, we're willing to listen and be very reasonable.
That's all we.
I just don't know, you know, when.
That's all we're asking.
That's all we're asking.
What certain demands are going to be made, and to what level you expect me to meet those demands.
You already meet the zoning, so.
Right.
What we want to know is that you've had a conversation with them, you've considered it, if you can't, if you can't agree to it, if you can't meet them halfway, move a little bit, then we want to know why you can't.
And then we'll vote.
And we're reasonable.
Yeah.
Okay.
No, we're not, we're not telling you that they get to design your plat for you.
Right.
Thank, I understand. Okay, let's, let's go that route, then.
Let's approve the preliminary plat today.
Yes.
And then, okay.
Yes.
So. Or not approve the preliminary plat.
Yeah, so.
We're going to say yes or no.
So, and then I just want to make the statement for the, for the neighbors that are here, circle up, designate a point of contact, get with the applicant, so that you can start that communication process.
So, we're looking for a motion on the preliminary plat.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve C-7592 preliminary plat in Mustang Creek Estates.
Commissioner Meek?
With.
Subject to?
Subject to the seven technical evaluations.
Subject to the technical evaluations, Commissioner Meek moves to approve of C-7592 the preliminary plat, subject to the technical evaluations. That motion's been seconded by Commissioner Powers. Please cast your votes. And the motion passes. And to be clear to the neighbors, we're, we, again, can't participate in those conversations, but before they come back with a final plat, we will be able to then, at that point, have this exact same process again, where you can come up and tell us what happened, how you're feeling about the changes that they made, if there were any. It may, you may find after having a conversation, there aren't any changes that are needed, but we just want to encourage that conversation to take place. Thanks, everyone, on that. We are now at the end of this, items to be, separate items to be heard. We're on additional items, the consideration of our calendar. I believe we added, one of the things we did last year that was new, was we added another summer meeting, didn't we? We used to only meet once in, once a month in summer. I think we added the June, two meetings in June, right? Are we satisfied with that? I think we still were okay in keeping a quorum, so I think that was the concern. So, I like it being here. It keeps us from having those super-long agendas.
This was before me, but there were three in June.
Those are your filing days.
Filing days. Oh, here we go, sorry. Sorry, sorry.
No matter how much we want, do they want, let us meet three times a month.
Staff loves this.
I may not make the February 22 one.
Okay. Are we good with the calendar? We need a motion. Commissioner Powers moves to approve of the presented 2024 Planning Commission meeting schedule.
No second. It fails. Went away. Can't have it. Can't have it.
And the motion's been seconded by Commissioner Meek. Please cast your votes. And the motion passes. Wonderful. We are in line for communications and reports, Planning Commission committees, no report, Planning Commission members, Commissioner Claire.
So, surprised to me to find out, before me, that this is Mr. Liggins' last Planning Commission, so I want to congratulate him, and he's, he's got to be one of the most helpful gentlemen that I've ever come across. I can't, I can't remember how many times there's been an applicant that's struggled either with the presentation or understanding, and he steps outside with them and kind of walks them through the process. So, thoroughly enjoyed working with you and wish you the best of luck on your next adventure.
Here, here.
Commissioner Powers.
Well, ditto on that, for sure. I have two things I want to talk to you about. Went to a, I talked a little bit about this at the study session, I went to a homelessness town hall that Councilman Cooper threw, was that last week or the week before? And it was, it was eye-opening. I mean, you guys may know a lot more about this than I do, but I have to confess that most of my face-to-face experience with homelessness is when I'm meeting with applicants on things, and they're telling me, oh, yeah, we have a big problem with homelessness, you know, camps right over here, and I'm, I always end up looking around me and going, here? I mean, you know, they, they don't make any sense to me, I don't understand anything about them, and so I decided it was time for me to start educating myself about this little bit. And, you know, given my just general lack of enthusiasm about things, I think we need a subcommittee on homelessness. And one of the things that was talked about at the town hall, as I'm, wouldn't surprise anybody, is the need for affordable housing, and, you know, they talked about people being evicted, and that's just like one step away from homelessness, and, you know, that this is just really, the city has, has in the last few years done something that, you know, is kind of remarkable to me. We've lived in the city a long, long time, and in the past, our, our response to things like this has generally been to ignore them until they blow up in our face. So, the city is taking a very proactive approach to this. You know, they put an item on the last MAPS vote, and, you know, they're putting money into it, and from the presentation that I listened to, it sounds to me like they're spending it wisely. I mean, they're really trying to get to the very heart of it and come up with actual solutions that are both workable in the sense of being implementable, but workable also in the sense of being real solutions. And I was so impressed, but, but we talked about, they talked about, you know, ADUs, among other things, you know, being one small piece of a very big puzzle. ADUs, among other things, you know, being one small piece of a very big puzzle. And other things that struck me as things that do come across this horseshoe, that we are talking about and voting on and doing things about and making decisions about, including as we were at the, at the study session, talking about ADUs and how that's going to work and how it's going to help and that kind of thing. So, I think we need to, I think we need to, you know, dig in here. And never being one to volunteer other people, since I feel the need to educate myself more about this, I'd be more than happy to be a member of this committee. So, I think it would be a really, really good idea. I don't know whether we can actually take action in that case, you know, just on this kind of a thing, or whether we need to actually put something on the agenda or what. But I really think we should educate ourselves as a commission more about how our role in this process is either helping or hurting, and what we can do about that. So...
I think that's great. And I think we did a similar thing, even though, you know, we have less, even less ability to act with schools and how we were hearing all these complaints all the time. And the reason why we hear less about it now is because of the proactive stance that, you know, our former chairman took in trying to get everyone organized on this. So, I think it's a great idea to do the same on homelessness. I fully support it. So, I think let's talk about what we need to do on implementation.
Okay. And the other thing I want to talk about is this photo that was included in the packet on our last item of the deer reminded me of something. Berry Lodge. They have, they've done something to the Lake Hefner Lake Road. As you're coming north on Meridian, there's a place where it splits and it goes off this way in the direction of the fire department. And by the way, they've built a bus terminal thing there, which is, you know, I'm not complaining about that. But as the road goes this way, and then it goes this way, and you're going up toward the golf course and the clubhouse. And this triangular intersection has always operated, well, I'm not going to complain about the stop signs. I'm not going to do that. I'm just going to swallow that part. But, right at the moment, I assume probably because the stop signs are new, they have these gigantic powered lights that are just like, whoa, you know, sitting on the triangle. And behind the fire station, between it and the marina, is kind of a meadow where very frequently, especially at this time of year and in the spring, along toward twilight, you can see herds of deer out there grazing. And I'm not a fan of the lights, I got to say, because they're very intrusive. And I would really, really like to see them go away. So, that's my little two cents.
Barry heard it.
I'm not, I'm not a big fan of the stop signs either. I'll just say that, but...
No stop signs, no lights. It's going to be a dangerous city. We let Janice plan it here.
It has operated that way my whole life. There's one stop sign in each direction, but now there's like four of them or five of them, and I don't like that. So...
I suspect it's, so that's the end of the BRT, and there's going to be a lot more bus traffic and probably in and around that intersection. So, I suppose...
I know.
I have something to do with that.
I know. They've got to come up with something else. It's just not, it's not workable. The lights are the big problem. They scare the deer.
Always tell lawyers, man.
Okay, that's all.
Thank you. Commissioner Meek?
Hey, how's it going? I'd also like to say goodbye to my brother Curtis. And we'll see you at your retirement party and talk some more. Thank you for all your years of service. I went through a lot with you when you were in Public Works, and you've always helped me out. And you've been a good guy to talk to, and you've always been very helpful. Thank you. The last thing I want to say is, as a planning commissioner, I don't know what we have to do as a commission to try to get, no matter if it's in a PUD or a SPUD, try to get minimum subdivision design requirements. And I'm speaking of arterial street screenings. You know, as you can tell from today, I'm big on that. And every development we let go without it, I believe hurts, hurts the city and driving around in the city. And we're approving subdivisions like crazy. And these people that put these subdivisions in, they can afford to put nicer fences along main thoroughfares on the exterior. And I just wish we could figure out a way to where even in a PUD, there's a minimum, and we're notified when that minimum's not being met. And I believe our minimum needs to be a higher level.
And it's a great opportunity for another study session kind of conversation about what all, what all our current powers are as far as addressing that and how it fits with the comp plan. So, good opportunity for us all to get better educated on that issue.
Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Meek. Commissioner Privet?
I would say the same to Curtis. Been a pleasure working with you. I think I came on right about the time you got into subdivision and zoning. So, good to be here with you on all that. It's been a fun ride. Depending on how you define fun. That's all I got.
Thank you. Commissioner Newman?
Thanks, Curtis, for your service and enjoy your retirement. And that's all I've got.
Thank you. Commissioner Govine?
Yeah, same. Same sentiments to Curtis. I felt some ping of guilt on approving one of those cases today, where I know that historic home on Klassen is going to get knocked down that I know is dear to your heart, but I do think the project is a good result in the end. And I've gone and snooped around that house quite a bit, and it's in really bad shape. So, I felt like it was, it's a net gain for the city on that one. Anyways, congratulations on your retirement.
You see how important you are, Curtis? Commissioners feel like they have to explain just to you why they voted the way they did.
Yeah.
Not constituents, none of that. They want to make sure Curtis Liggins knows why they voted the way they voted.
I was hoping it'd get delayed one more time, and then you wouldn't, you wouldn't even know. It wouldn't, you'd sleep. And also, there's a section of sidewalk on 21st. It's just a five-foot section missing. I really want to do something about.
Barry, can you do anything with that?
It seems like it'd be, anyway.
Talk to your councilman.
There you go. I will. Thanks.
Commissioner Noble?
No, I don't have anything. Thanks, Curtis. Curtis and I have known each other since I was a little kid, so it's been a long, long, long time. He tells me stories about my father a lot, so...
That's great. Well, I'm a big Curtis fan, and I just can't thank you enough for your service. I can't thank you enough for being just a friend, a mentor on these issues, your encouragement, spending time with me, just like Commissioner Meek was sharing. We've just enjoyed having you and are just so grateful for all that you've done. And know that even when you're in retirement, you're still a part of the family. So, you can go get a chair next to Mr. Warrior in the back, and that way I can, we can all be comforted by knowing you're still with us here. So, enjoy your retirement, though, and just thank you all for all that you've done. So, appreciate everyone's patience. It's been a long one. Expect similar in December, unfortunately, in terms of length, because that's just the way the end of the year goes. But appreciate you all and your attention to detail in all these issues. So, I think we're, Planning Department?
In case you're wondering, Curtis has been with the city for 39 years.
Wow.
And he's not going to have any regrets, not just one more year.
Were you, were you a dog catcher here? I thought that was interesting.
That was the, I didn't even know that. First, that was the first?
Second.
Second, okay, second roll. So, congratulations, Curtis. And just to take, I did take notes of, excuse me, the comments. The subdivision regulations would be, I think, a good time, which we will be revisiting soon. We can look at the, you know, the fencing requirements and every other requirement in there. So, I'll see if I can find out. I can't remember when on the schedule that is, but it's coming up. So, next year.
Even on that one today, we have the Trex composite that looks like stockade that is a lot 20, 30 times longer. We're not asking you to solve a grid. There's, you know...
There's ways to skirt spending big bucks.
There's so many more options than there were when we drafted the subdivision regulation requirements we have now.
Yeah. So, we look forward to that.
Awesome.
And that's all I've got.
Municipal Council's office?
Yes, sir.
Citizens to be heard, staff to be heard. All right. Well, seeing as we reached the end of our agenda, we're adjourned.